I'd like to call the meeting of the Independence Township Planning Commission to order, please. First item is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting tonight. Our meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda that is on the front table, as we may amend it in a few minutes when we seek approval for that. The agendas and minutes for prior meetings are available on the website. In addition to the Planning Commission tonight and other members that we have representing the township are our Planning Director, Brian Ottman, Megan Mason Minnick from Carlisle-Wartman representing our consultant, our planning consultant, and Jason Longhurst representing Noah Kinfrost, our engineering consultant. Roll call, please.
Jason Borsheim.
Here.
Sam Morocco.
Here.
Bill Scarborough.
Here.
Linda Billings here, Joe Suter.
Here.
Ron Ritchie.
Here.
We're good, we have a quorum. Next item is approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any amendments or additions to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to support the agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Announcement on public comments, we will now go into a session where we allow public comment from the audience for items that are not on the agenda. We have a good crowd tonight, so I want to emphasize. Later, any agenda items, you will be provided an opportunity to speak on those items at that time. So this public comment session is only for items that you want to talk about that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak once I open it, please raise your hand, you'll be recognized, and you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and as briefly as possible, please tell us what you want to say. We'll go through people that are here in attendance tonight, and then we'll go online, which looks like we have a fair number of them tonight. Any questions on that? So with that, I will open up to public comment for items not on the agenda. Anybody out there, anything they want to say? Quiet group. Okay, one last chance for online or in the audience, and then I'll close it if nobody raises their hand or signals otherwise. Okay, the public comment for items not on the agenda is closed. So the first item under public hearings is Veras Development Group. This is for the Walden Village Two Plan Unit Development at Wald, across the street here. PC File 2024-012, they are requesting final site plan approval for part of Phase Three of the Walden Village Plan Unit Development. Part of Phase, the east part of Phase Two was the Meyer Building, which has already been approved. This is for the west part of Phase Three, the commercial part. So that's what this topic is about. At last month's meeting, we postponed this, we discussed a lot of different issues. To the best of my knowledge, or recollection, those issues had to do with screening and buffering along the west property line, loading area, and truck circulation, covering the full gables on the sides of the buildings with brick, dumpster locations, lighting, and a few other small issues. Megan, would you like to address how the applicant has addressed those issues?
Sure. On the architecture, on the daycare pool, brick has been extended to the gable ends of that building. With the commercial building, additional doors are shown, and the applicants noted that that may be subject to adjustment with the final tenant build-out. In terms of perimeter screening, it's been enhanced, the perimeter of the daycare will include a six-foot-high fence and landscaping. I'll note that the landscaping is a variety of species before it was a single species. The landscape is, fence is in addition to the screening on the opposite side of the property boundary. The perimeter landscaping adjacent to the entry drive has been increased in width and in landscape plannings, and the same with the rear screening, they've added an additional, I think, five feet with hedgerow planting and trees. In terms of the dumpsters, those two locations of the commercial dumpsters have been changed, and those were more pushed to the sides in places where they are more screened and farther away from the residential component of this PUD, and all three dumpsters have had additional screening. In terms of loading, the applicant showed a loading space by widening the main drive entry, entry drive, that pullout will allow for loading and unloading without interfering with vehicle, without interfering with vehicle traffic. In terms of pedestrian circulation, crosswalks and ramps have been added to the two entry-drive locations, so people will be able to cross safely and access the daycare. Lighting, parking lot lighting's been reduced to eighteen feet in compliance with the zoning ordinance. The wall scunt lights on the building frontages have been better identified, and all the lighting is shown on the lighting plan.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Epping, did you have anything you would like to say? And I might add that because we have a fairly large audience here, would you give a brief presentation of your project? We went through it in detail last month, so you don't have to go through a lot of detail, but for the benefit of the audience.
I appreciate this. So, yes, we, to summarize it, and then I'll go through real quick graphic details. To summarize it, we took a lot of feedback last month, and I believe we've addressed every single thing, and the positive and the affirmative responding to the commissions and the consultants' letters. There were basically ten items, as you pointed out, setbacks, buffering, loading zone, crosswalks, and so forth throughout the site plan. We submitted a new site plan that looks similar, but really has addressed all these. And Brian, maybe if we can just click through those real quickly, I can point out specific and then answer any questions. So, go to the next slide. No, next one, please.
It's a little slow.
So setbacks, as Megan had pointed out, particularly along the northern entrance drive, we widened that area, created about an additional eighteen foot, so we've got about twenty-foot total of landscape area on this side of the phase line. With that, we really doubled down on large evergreen trees, evergreen plants, and enhanced that buffer. We also wrapped that buffer all the way around with more evergreens around the daycare parking lot across the playground. We included a six-foot-tall decorative fence with landscaping on the outside of the fence, evergreen arborvitae, junipers, and then some lilacs, and that's all on this side of the phase line, as we talked about before. On the other side of the phase line, Phase Two also satisfied the phasing requirements, so really, we're essentially doubling, and with the case of the fence, tripling the screening between the uses. Right? I'm sorry, that was setbacks, I jumped right into buffering. Setbacks, we didn't change anything. I think we had agreed that the setbacks made sense. In fact, what we were doing was basically enhancing setbacks or making them greater than the original PUD provided. So we, I just talked about buffering there, we can come back if there's questions. Here's a graphic that, that...
Can I interrupt?
Sure, please.
Because I had a question. Go back one. There was a picture in the bottom right-hand corner.
It's kind of a little slow.
I hate to interrupt you, but I was curious, I could not find any detail on the plans on what the fence looked like, or what it was made of, or what color it was, so...
We, there is, there was a detail added, small, I agree, on one of the landscape sheets to reference it. It's a six-foot-tall decorative vinyl fence, likely to be more of an almond color to match the fences that went around some of the other phases in the townhomes.
Thank you.
And again, there's going to be landscaping on the outside of it, so from the outside, you probably won't see much of that fence. The next slide shows just an illustrative version of what that buffer will look like, that this is in that drive lane, essentially standing in the new loading area looking west, and that's, you know, probably two to three years as both the townhome, the Phase Two landscape grows, and as this landscape grows, the intent there is that's going to be a very predominantly evergreen, but a combination of a lot of different types of plant material so that it stays healthy. Brian?
Yeah, it's kind of a little slow, there's a lot of people on the...
Some of the other areas that we talked about last month were loading areas, crosswalks, and truck turning. The biggest, as Megan had pointed out, is by shifting the western road, it's really a driveway more than a road, but shifting that drive lane, that twenty-foot to the east, we did lose about eleven parking spots throughout, but that allowed us to shift that drive lane to the east, it allowed us to build that buffer that we just talked about. But it also took that, gave us a dedicated loading zone. Sam asked some good questions last year, last month about, hey, where's the loading going to occur, how does it work, what about turning radiuses? All very good and fair questions, and so we took that seriously and really looked at some alternatives. This loading area is really, will accommodate everybody. It's central enough, we made sure that the sidewalks and the ramps work to get to every location, but although we don't anticipate much, if any, tractor-trailer type deliveries, this would accommodate that, although almost everything would be more in the box truck-type delivery, and obviously it would accommodate those as well. The turning radiuses, we included three different sheets for turning radiuses, both to show travel routes as well as actual radiuses on curbs. So we looked at fire and safety, we looked at trash removal, and then we looked at delivery. And so each of those have different routes so that they can get to all the buildings, get to the trash enclosures. We adjusted radiuses on the inner curbs to make sure that everything tracks and works well. Architecture and doors and patios, again, it was talked about enhancing the architecture, particularly on the end gables of the early childhood education building. That now has brick on both the east and the west side, and frankly, all the way around the building, all the way up, so that drive it on those gables has been removed, and the brick will go all the way to the top. A few minor things in terms of notes, I think we still, both Noah Kinfrost and Carlisle-Wartman reviews said, hey, we still have a couple little notes to pick up on our plans, which we'll take care of, but things like acknowledging the plant material replacement requirements for the township will be addressed. One item in terms of a slight deviation is the plant requirements. We have all sorts of requirements in the township, green belts, landscape, all those different things. Megan did a great job going through and showing where our trees are planted. One area that we're asking for acknowledgement at least is across the green belt, the frontage of, on Walden. There's a number of trees that are required. What we've done is we've also added patios, we've added landscape, we've added benches, we've added an awful lot of stuff, and so what we've done is really kind of modified where some of those trees will be planted. There'll be plenty of landscaping across the front, but net-net, the project's required to have forty-three trees. We've actually more than doubled that, we're planting eighty-nine trees, but the Carlisle letter does appropriately call out where some of those frontage requirements are, some are planted in the front and others are planted on the side. Brian, if we don't mind just going through these quickly, we're just really, really proud of this architecture, about the way this is going to lay out, in keeping with the goals of the master plan of this project in the township. We're bringing the buildings to the sidewalk, we're enhancing or putting in that eight-foot safety path along the frontage. There's, as we say, going to be front patios, a mix of restaurant, retail, and some commercial, as well as the early childhood education down on the west side. All the architecture is going to match and complement itself, as well as tie in real nicely with the independence market across the street. So the vision of the original PUD, the intent of the PUD, and everything within the development agreement, we believe has been satisfied and really works well. So, here to answer questions, appreciate everyone's time. We're looking for ideally your approval and recommendation for approval for the Township Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go to, I'll go to the public hearing in a minute, just ask if any of the commission members have any follow-up for either Megan or Mr. Epping, any things they raised. Brian?
Yeah, Megan, you guys, Carlisle-Wartman report showed there was a couple of things that still need to be addressed. Are you satisfied with those, or do they still need to be answered?
I feel that those could be addressed as part of, if you made those conditions of approval.
Okay.
Or recommended that those be part of conditions of approval.
So you talked about the sidewalk dimensions, but that was one of the things that says wasn't detailed on the print, so...
We'll add those, and should the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the board, we certainly can clean all those up for the package that would go to the board.
All right, great.
Anybody else up here? Sam?
Anytime, Mr....
No. Okay, with that, I'll open it up for comments from the public, please. Anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say on this proposed project? Did I hear a voice? How about online? Okay, no comments from the public, I will close the public session now. Sam, you can say more.
I got, Jim, two concerns I've got. The dumpster behind the daycare center, first let me say thank you for making all these changes. I think it's a way better plan architecturally and layout than you started with, so I appreciate that. The dumpster on the daycare center is a big concern of mine. We have a daycare center next door to here, and in the summertime, we know we have a daycare center next door to us. So, can you bring up the site plan, Brian?
Yeah, look at the, it should be right up there in the corner, see it?
Okay. So, where is it? So here, I would feel, with the west wind going, I don't want to put it where the restaurants could be affected. I think this would be better served away from the residents here, protecting them, there is houses here, so I'm concerned about the smell from the diapers being so close to them, and with the west wind, it would send it into the parking lot, so that's one concern, having it so close to the neighbor's house there, that, only because you can't, they're not airtight, and you can't control that. The only other thing I had is the photometrics show that there is a, that we're really washing right to those neighbors' property line with that, and I was wondering if there was a way, if we could get the photometrics to work with this light being here, it would zero us out before we got to the property line. I don't know if it covers the parking lot back to that corner, you know, if we do that, but if you look at the photometrics, we're, we're over the property line with the light wash, and they're already, I mean, even though photometrics are supposed to be accurate, you know, light pollution is light pollution, and it doesn't stay on the fence line, you know? So that would, those are the only two things that really jumped out at me. And then, the, do we know what the timing on the Phase Two plantings are?
Let me go back and first acknowledge and address your two points. They both make sense, and I think we can accommodate those, we'll look at them. I want to verify the truck turning radius to get to empty that dumpster, but I'm sure that we can work it out. The lower area is an exit only, but we'll work with the engineers, and we'll make that work. I hear what you're saying with the dumpster, and we'll figure it out, as well as with the lights. Phase Two planning, as it relates to the townhomes?
Yeah.
None of those, essentially, each of the townhome, the landscaping associated with each of the townhome buildings is completed as the buildings are completed. Those will probably be some of the last buildings, only because they're working their way around the northern side and coming down. All the stormwater has to be in place, because as you know, there's some temporary stormwater holding sedimentation base there. So I would think that the Polte is anticipating the entire thing, this is me, I think it'll all be done by this summer, or this fall, but I'd have to verify with them, and that will be landscaped as, as that's graded and completed.
And are they filling in that, they're filling in that depression there, so they've got to get that grade straight.
That's right.
Before they get to that point, which is fine.
Yeah, those are temporary.
I think that you've increased a lot of the buffering, which I appreciate for the residents, and if we can, it will be well past the eighty percent requirement when they, you know, mature soon, especially from both sides happening, but the quality of life on that dumpster could make or break living there.
Good point.
And I just, I don't know how to fix it, other than to say we moved it as far away as we could.
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
And count on the westerly winds to favorably take it the other way.
I'll talk to our operators. Everbrook have something like a thousand schools around the country, and so they're really considered among the very best. And I don't know the answer, and unfortunately, they're not here tonight, but I can find out just operationally how it's dealt with too, and maybe they've got some solutions that we can offer as well.
My concern is, is we did get complaints, I don't know what standing we would have to address them, and so I think we got to just feel comfortable that we did everything that we could do, you know? And the light, you know, those are going to be their backyards and patios, which, they're always going to be light there. I mean, you're right next to a commercial thing, and they know what purchasing, I get all that. I just want to make sure if we could zero out before the property line?
Combination of the location and even adding some shielding to it might help.
Okay. Those were my comments.
I had a comment on the dumpster, so I'll jump in now. You know, you've done a nice job in making them, I think, as attractive, as attractive as you possibly can, but one of the things I hate about dumpsters is their doors. They always are broken, they're off the hinges, they fall apart. Yours appear to be some kind of a chain link thing with, I think, if I remember.
I, frankly, Mr. Scarborough, I'll have to check. I don't think that they're chain-linked, they're screened all the way, but...
They're a metal screen of some sort.
Yeah, exactly.
With some vinyl on them, I think I read.
Could, could be.
I thought they were brick.
Well, brick enclosure. We're talking about the gates.
Oh, okay.
I mean, is there... Don't ruin all the nice work you've done by putting up doors, and, you know, they're always left open, too.
Yeah. Well, you know, part of what we're learning as a community is when we build these four-sided projects, unlike, say, the, you know, either our Krogers where they truly have a bad house, all four sides become important, become visible, and so people like Frank Arcori, who you met last month and is here tonight, who's the owner and operator, is really, they're a local company, they're tuned into their properties, and they take that seriously, not only because it's the quality of the property, but it leads to the quality of the tenants, and so we'll manage it well. I'll double-check on those materials. Sam?
Brian, the other point I forgot to, in my notes I didn't mention, is on that dumpster, it's got a forty-two-inch-deep foundation going underneath it, and it's in the setback. I was, I was understanding that you can't have a foundation in a setback.
Well, setbacks, yeah, setbacks traditionally here are taken to a, the foundation on a structure. Typically, with dumpster corrals like that, the dumpster enclosures, they've not, they've been in setbacks, and we've allowed them, so, in the past. So that's, you know, I think, being a forty-two-inch footing, though, that's going to be part of the building permit, obviously, you know?
If you were able to relocate it to the west, it takes it out of the rear yard setback and kind of cleans up that little caveat also.
That issue.
You know?
Yeah, it's an interpretation issue.
I'm interpreting it.
I interpret them as not even phase lines, or not even property lines, but phase lines, but...
Okay.
Anybody else in the commission have comments or questions?
I had a few more. I was just curious, on the west side, your fence is six feet, and I think it referenced that the, some of the trees and bushes were only five feet. Can you make them six?
Well, on the, it's a question of health and density, too. So what we have is a six-foot fence, and then on the outside, but still on this side of the phase line, where last month, we had just a long row of arborvitae, we've changed that to groups of arborvitae, juniper, and lilacs.
You noticed that, yeah.
What happens with, if I can bring in a five-foot-tall plant as opposed to six, it relates to the size of the root ball, and so that six-foot has a larger root ball, and the spacing actually, you know, you're kind of going root ball to root ball, and so I can actually put more plants and create more coverage if I can bring them in at that five-foot size. It's not a cost issue or anything else, I truly believe as a landscape architect, it gives you a better planting.
Okay. Jason, Comment Nine, two-way drive aisle at the south end of the daycare lot may affect traffic entering the one-way exit.
Yeah, it's just, it's a carryover from the previous letter, just to make sure that we have, you know, the striping, the signage and everything that says do not enter as you're turning off of Walden, heading north.
It's not a site plan issue you want to correct, you just want to make sure you're...
We just want to make sure it carries through under the construction drawing, obviously those signs, and everything's in place there to minimize the occurrence of people trying to turn into that drive aisle.
And the same thing regarding Comment Ten, the width of the drive aisle?
So there, so that's up by the loading zone, so all of the roadways, that bicycle site and the surrounding areas, I think they're all twenty-seven feet wide, and what they did, when they shifted everything over and we added the loading zone, they took the width of that drive aisle from twenty-seven to twenty-four, where the loading zone is, but to the, to the south, it's twenty-seven, and I think to the north, once you get onto the street adjacent to the residential, it's back to twenty-seven as well. But I think there, by taking the three feet out, you're able to provide more buffering adjacent to the residential area, and the twenty-four meets the requirement.
And to, I agree with you, Jason. To add to that, my thought really was ninety-five percent of the time, that loading zone is going to be open, and that's twelve-foot wide, so when you take the twenty-four and the twelve, if two cars had to pass, and there were two trucks had to pass, there's, there's going to be quite a bit of pavement there, and I didn't want to make it just, you know, I didn't want to land a helicopter there.
Anybody else from the commission? Assuming we, there is a desire amongst the commission to move forward with this, I just want to point out, we need a couple separate motions, we need a motion to determine that there are modifications regarding the three buildings instead of four, and the setbacks is a minor modification, and that we approve that modification, and then we need a motion to recommend approval of, to the board of the final site plan. Megan, a question for you, you referenced the parking space with, do we need to specifically approve that in our motion, or is that, or if we just approve it as presented, is that good enough?
I would say that you just need to recognize that deviation for the parking space width, and I would include that in that, those minor amendments.
So I've got, please help me, commission members, I've got that one that we just mentioned, indications of the sidewalk dimensions, correcting the height of the light poles and the Kelvin level, providing colors for elevations, correct notations on a number of parking spaces on Sheet Three, C3, and the Noah Kinfrost letters, a letter of two, seven, twenty-five, all comments excluding one and eight, I believe. Did I, and Sam's issue of the dumpster locations.
And one pole light, right?
And pole light, yeah.
It was the only one that was washing the property out, the one. And the dumpster doors as well, did we say that?
Uh, yeah.
Do we, do we need to mention that the daycare rear setback is fifty-point-three rather than sixty-five? I mean, that's what they're showing, so...
I, that's one of the minor modifications, so I think if, we'll have a separate motion to acknowledge that it's a minor modification, and that language can be included in that motion.
Okay.
Does that sound good, Megan? I got it, right there? No further comments, I'll look for a motion.
We thought that's what you were doing.
All right. First one, I'll make a motion to recognize that... All right, first one, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to recognize that the modification changing from four buildings to three, and the front yard setback for the daycare, and the building and the patio side yard setbacks are considered minor modifications, and that we approve those modifications.
I'll support that.
Hold on.
I'd leave it to the front and rear yard for the daycare.
Yes.
I'll, I'll amend it accordingly.
Continue support.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Repose? Thank you. I will recommend, that we recommend to the township board that they approve final site plan for the west half of Phase Three. Subject to recognition of the deviation in the parking space width, indication of sidewalk dimensions on the plans with such dimensions meaning our ordinance, correcting the height of the light poles, and indicating thirty-five hundred Kelvin or less for all lighting, and the possible movement of one of the light pole locations, providing color elevations in accordance with graphic representations, the sign approvals, and correct notations for the numbers of parking spaces on sheet C three, the Noah and Frost letter of two, seven, twenty-five, all comments except one and eight, the possible movement of the dumpster in the northwest corner of the daycare parking lot, and some better determination on the dumpster doors.
Question?
I think I got it, everything?
Yeah, can we just add that it's for a PC file, twenty twenty-four dash zero one two?
I will add that, thank you.
I would like clarification about the dumpster moving before I vote on it, is that possible?
As, as I said, we're committed to do that, I think it's a reasonable expectation, I just, you know, I guess I'd add the caveat, as long as we can safely get a truck in and out of there. Right now, I can pull a truck in, pick it up, back out, and then come back around, now, we, we just have to double, you know, we already know that a fire truck can go around, where we added those two landscape islands, so it seems reasonable that it, certainly a, a, a trash truck could also make that turn and come back in and pull it up, so and Mr. Morocco, I, I don't, I don't see an issue with it, but I, I do at least wanna run the template for it.
Are you okay if that's handled administratively?
I am, as long as it's handled, I'm, I'm genuinely concerned about its location.
We're not.
And I would, I would be, it's, you know, it would be, I would not be in favor of it if we couldn't get it a little bit farther, right now, it's in the corner of two residential properties, it needs to be on the outlying, somehow get it to the outlying, in my opinion.
You, you absolutely have my word, and I think Mr. Arcori said, we're, we're taking it seriously, and I think, I don't, I don't see an issue with it, I just wanted to validate that we're not creating a safety issue.
Okay, thank you, one more point of clarity, you said three, thirty-five hundred Kelvin or less, I think we're, are we, aren't we holding to thirty-five hundred for uniformity in the township now, or are we allowing it to go less?
It can go less.
Okay.
That's just the maximum level.
I thought we were trying to get uniformity on the, on the color of light, you know?
It's not what the ordinance says, the ordinance says thirty-five hundred Kelvin or less.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I have one more addition to my conditions, the fire marshal's letter, conditions of the fire marshal's letter dated two, five, twenty-five. Joe, you seconded, didn't you?
Yes.
Were you?
I will.
Okay, why don't we do a roll call on that one?
Jason Morschon?
Yes.
Sam Morocco?
Yes.
Bill Scarborough?
Yes.
Belinda Billings-Jess? Joe Suter?
Yes.
Brian Ritchie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, thank you, everybody.
Next item is also a public hearing, PC file, two oh two four dash zero zero five, petitioner is Clearview Homes. This is for a Phase Three and Four of the Eagle Ridge Estates, located on Mayby Road, a little bit east of Clintonville. As I said, this is a public hearing, we will open the public hearing in a little bit. Again, this is a recommendation to the township board for special land use approval and final site plan approval of Phases Three and Four. Megan, would you like to summarize the history of this project and the current requests?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, so this is a project, which was a multi-phase development that was approved back in, I think, nineteen ninety-one. So the main portion of Morgan Lake, that's now called Eagle Ridge, was approved for an additional, so backing up, Morgan Lake was originally approved as a multi-phase development for a total of three hundred and thirty-one single-family attached and detached dwellings. Stone Meadows, which is located north and west of Mayby Road, across from the Mount Zion Church, was the first phase, and that had seventy-nine detached units, and that was completed around two thousand. The ridge at Morgan Lake, on the south side of Mayby, west of the oriented township border, was the second phase, and that consisted of forty-nine units. The main part of this, now called Eagle Ridge, was approved for two hundred and three dwellings, but that remained dormant for many years, there were many reasons for the slow rate, there was a succession of developers who took control over the project, there was a failure to establish the golf course in a playable condition, and there was a requirement that Mayby Road be paved from the entrance to Mount Zion to Independence Oriented Border by the hundred and twenty-fifth certificate of occupancy. Ultimately, the course, the, the golf course failed, and so there were some difficult issues that had to be addressed, and in terms of many of the people who had purchased homes expected to be on the golf course. The solution was to dedicate thirty of the northern acres of Morgan Lake to the ridge, so that the residents would always live next to permanent open space, and this is the area that we're traditionally calling Phase One of Eagle Ridge. In addition, twenty acres of the northwest bend of Mayby Road was dedicated to the land conservancy, and so finally, the attached units were eliminated, and the board approved an additional twenty-three units for the project. So moving forward, the first phase, consisting of fifty-seven units, was approved for construction around two thousand fourteen, Phase Two was approved with forty-nine units, and it was later expanded with additional property. And those are, that Phase Two is under construction, and that is a different property owner and developer in Phase Two than was in Phase One, and is the same owner and developer of Phase Two, that is now proposing to complete Phases Three and Four. So what this, this is under the effect of a planned residential development, and that was approved in nineteen ninety-one, and so a bit different than the P U Bs that you see, and I believe that this is the only PRD in the entire township. Except for O'Kirst, thank you, Mr. Ottman, both the PRD agreement and the permit conditions were entered into, and then they were amended later. So the overall project has two hundred and thirty-four lots, and what the applicant has proposed matches what is in those, matches what was, what is in those permit conditions, and the permit conditions are what's ruling the development, so the permit conditions are essentially a mini zoning ordinance for this area. So your review procedures is a two-part process, the first part has already been completed, which is the approval of that concept development plan, and the PRD development agreement and permit conditions, so that's, those were approved by township board upon recommendation of a planning commission at a past date, but you're bound by them, and as the case for Phases Two, One, and Two, the current authority of the planning commission is the reviewing recommendation to the township board of a specialty in use and a final site plan approval, and approval of Phases Three and Four, so you are a recommending body, and the final decision on the site plan approval, what's before you tonight, rests with the township board. And I wanna clarify, there, we've raised a number of issues in our review, and we can go over those after the public hearing, if that would be your choice, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, that'd be fine. At this time, is the applicant here? Would you like to address the, the commission, and on top of any general comments you'd like to make, at some point, I'd like you to discuss discussions and agreements you've had with the HOAs regarding the road maintenance.
Okay, thank you, my name's Eric Kinesny, Clearview Homes. The, the version of the site plan that is on the screen has gone through four revisions, we submitted our original plans in May, have been working with the township and the consultants, received multiple reviews, and currently believe that we've taken those all into consideration, have made many revisions, and now believe that we're in full compliance with the requirements of the PRD. The remaining items are all typical items that should be addressed in engineering.
Okay, how about discussions on the road agreements, road maintenance?
Um, I guess, how deep you want me to get?
I'll leave that up to you.
Okay.
If, if you wanna keep it up about here, and then if we need to dig deeper, we can dig deeper.
Okay. There, there's been discussions going on for years about potentially setting up a master association, it is not a requirement of the PRD, that's been confirmed multiple times by township attorney, see Brittany's not here, but we have been writing from her, it's, in my head, it's a nice to have, and we've been, never been opposed to it, but it's not a requirement of the PRD, so it's kind of a key point. Brian personally sat in, I don't know, Brian, fifty meetings with me, Jerry, counsel, Brittany, our attorney, the previous Phase One president, and had discussions for multiple years, previous to our last approval, we were in negotiations, talking about it, and I'll use Brittany's exact word, township attorney, they ghosted us. They completely stopped communicating and really cut all ties to our discussion, we came back in front of the board, and everybody on the board agreed that wasn't something that should hold us up for, and Brittany reaffirmed that it's not a requirement of the PRD. Since finalizing the previous phase, we now have two phases, two separate HOAs, the requirements of the master D require that the second phase, which will also encompass Phase Three and Four, that HOA has a cost sharing requirement with the original phase, which has been in place since the beginning, has now had two years of calculations done, payments done, agreement between both HOAs, our HOA of Phase Two, Three, and what would be Four, has written a check to the original phase for the agreed amount, they've cashed it, they've used it for the exact intent of their requirement, which is the cost share. We currently have a budget for two thousand twenty-five that incorporates the exact same calculation, the exact same terms, and the same expectation, so we one hundred percent believe, and I'm sad to see that Brittany is not here, because I'm confident she would agree with everything I'm saying, and we've met the requirement, the intent of the PRD, and the full legal agreement in terms of it, the HOAs are doing it exactly as the intent requires, and again, just high level outside of that, we've never been opposed to talking about, haven't been, I spoke to Brittany last week, she was supposed to meet with the township supervisor on Wednesday, yesterday, don't know if she did or not, to fill him in and get him up to speed on all this, and make sure that he understood the township's position through the attorney of our actual requirements, so, I don't know, that's my high level description of that.
Okay.
Good?
Thank you.
Yep.
Any, any comments, we'll get into the details after the public hearing, but just before I move on, does any questions to elaborate or explain on that, further explanation from the commission? Okay, at this moment, I will open it to comments from the public regarding this development, as previously stated, raise your hand, come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening, my name is Justin Chmuleski, I live at five four nine two Morgan Lake Drive, I am in what would be referred to as Phase Two of this development under the HOA of Eagle Ridge Estates, which is distinct from the homeowners association Eagle Ridge at Morgan Lake. I'm here on behalf of myself and my wife, I'm here on behalf of a large contingent of residents in the neighborhood, in the interest of, of efficiency, we've opted to have me speak instead of everyone speak and repeat the same items over and over and over again. It's notable that I have the ability to speak, and I've been asked to speak on behalf of not just Phase Two residents, but also Phase One residents, and I should note that a number of residents are here, as this board has recognized, it's a large crowd tonight, and there's a, a good reason why. I'm, I'm here for a couple of reasons, number one, to bring to this board a number of issues that we as residents see, and in conjunction with that, bring a couple of proposed solutions that I think are common sense solutions that this board could entertain. I'm not here to prevent construction, I don't think that that's a realistic ask, but I would like to frame this through the lens of why should this board entertain the expansion of a project that Clearview has demonstrated they can't handle the scope of what they are currently dealing with? It, it's no secret to members of this board, Mr. Ottman, that this project has been fraught with problems, from the top to the bottom, and it comes down to management. There are existing grading issues in Phase One and Phase Two that have gone unaddressed. Both Eric and Jerry sit on the board and control the board for the Eagle Ridge Estates Homeowners Association, I believe incorrectly, because I believe that they have reached a benchmark where that should be turned over to the homeowners. It's interesting that Eric stood up, up here before this board and indicated that calculations were done to address the shared maintenance agreement, and I'll also address the, the road maintenance agreement at, at a, a later time. Fifteen days ago, I sent a letter to the board members requesting very specific documentation and accounting and a, a response, as we sit here tonight, I have had no response. Those calculations and those accountings have not been provided to me, and there are no explanation as to why they have not made those, those required, statutorily required disclosures to me as a resident of that neighborhood, even down to the streetlights, the streetlights in Phase Two, and then the expansion of Phase Two are completely different, a block apart. They can't even manage to get the streetlights correct, and they wanna expand this project into another hundred and four homes. Notwithstanding that, both phases have endured years of what can only be called a nuisance, frankly. I've experienced construction noise as early as five forty-five in the morning, as late as ten thirty at night, unfortunately, Mr. and, Mr. Ottman and I are on a first-name basis with the number of phone calls I have brought through, and, and I will, I will say to this board that Mr. Pearson has done a phenomenal job in reining this in. Not to mention the constant noise of radios, the constant flow of traffic through the neighborhood at a much greater than residential speed. The response from, well, let me back up, that noise isn't limited to five days a week, it's limited to all seven days of, of the week, which the ordinance allows for construction seven days a week, but we've had no breaks. Mother's Day, Easter, Christmas Day, New Year's Day, Independence Day, Memorial Day, and Labor Day have been impossible to enjoy in the, in the house because of constant noise in the neighborhood. That will go to my solution. because of constant noise in the neighborhood. That will go to my solution later on. I have brought these issues to ClearView myself through emails. I've copied Mr. Ottman on many of them. Jerry's first response to me was to sic his lawyer on him. No good neighbor approach, no attempt to bring a reasoned solution, only to throw up their hands and say, "They're independent contractors. We can't control them." I'm asking this board to ensure that ClearView understands that as the developer in this project, they absolutely have the ability and the requirement to supervise their subcontractors. I personally witnessed two different instances of public urination in my backyard by ClearView's contractors. I've called the police on both occasions. They've been addressed. This is a management issue. This is not simply a rogue employee. Each of these complaints to, to Mr. Ottman, Mr. Moran, Mr. Pearson has cost this township an incredible amount of money. I, in, in wasted money, frankly, for enforcement of something that ClearView should be handling themselves. The construction traffic I've mentioned earlier. You don't have to go past the stop sign at the, at the entrance to the neighborhood to see the, the trail of destruction that's been left in the neighborhood. Every traffic island has been driven over. Every curve in the road, that neighbor's yard has been destroyed. Not to mention the safety issues with dozens, if not hundreds, of trucks traveling through the neighborhood to access the construction site with kids in the neighborhood. As we, we're in the middle of winter now, but summer's coming, and summer is peak construction season. It's also peak playtime for the more than hundred, one hundred kids in the neighborhood. So, as I said, why am I saying all this? I'm saying all this to provide a backdrop for my request on behalf of, of everyone here to address these issues. ClearView wants to build a hundred and four homes at the back of this neighborhood. My house sits approximately three-quarters of a mile from the entrance. It's another quarter mile to the area that is proposed to be developed. It's a hundred and four truckloads of lumber, a hundred and four truckloads of brick, a hundred and four truckloads of roofing materials, concrete, asphalt, all the heavy equipment to do the, the grading, land clearing, debris removal. It's an extraordinary number of trucks through that neighborhood on a road not designed to support that type of weight at that bulk. My first request is this, and I expect this to be unpopular to the residents on Roar Road. There exists a emergency access off of Roar Road that would allow ClearView approximately a two-hundred-foot driveway directly into the construction site, as opposed to nearly a mile through the neighborhood. It's accessed directly off of a county-maintained road that is built to a standard that can withstand eighty to a hundred thousand pounds of heavy equipment rolling across it. I'm asking this township to, as part of this development, consider granting ClearView the ability to use that as a construction entrance and putting a barricade between the existing development and the future construction, preventing any construction traffic through the neighborhood. And in fact, I'm going to ask, I'm going to shoot for the moon here. I'm going to ask that this, this board make that entrance a permanent entrance into this neighborhood for a couple of reasons. One, the, the simple convenience of having access at two different points in the neighborhood. Two, from a public safety perspective. In addition to the fire response that would be necessary in the neighborhood, we have at least four law enforcement officers in Phase Two. Two of them are assigned to a special unit that requires on-call, rapid response at all hours of the day and night. A quarter mile out of the neighborhood onto a, a county road is way safer than any vehicle traveling through the neighborhood at any rate of speed trying to respond to an emergency. My second request is this, that as a condition of any permits being granted in this future development, that not only ClearView is held accountable to supervise each and every one of their subcontractors, but I'm asking for, frankly, a break. I, I'm asking for a break so that the neighbors that, that live in this neighborhood can enjoy their homes at least one day a weekend. I'm asking for no weekend construction. I think it's quite reasonable to eliminate at least one day of construction on the weekend to allow for all of this to settle down, to allow ClearView to do what it needs to do with minimal disruption to the remainder of the neighborhood. Mr. Chairman, you mentioned this road maintenance agreement. I've had conversation with the president of the, the front HOA, Phase One, and we agree on one thing. We agree that we can get that done, but we're, we agree that we cannot get that done with ClearView in the middle of it. I believe that once ClearView is out of that picture, the two HOAs can come to an agreement that this township would be satisfied with, that would address those issues moving forward. And, and with that, I thank this committee for its time, and I ask that you consider my requests.
We thank you for your comments, and we will certainly consider them. Anybody else in the audience? Nobody? Come on.
Matt Gray at 5460 Morgan Lake Drive, the current HOA president of Phase One. Yeah, I would like to, I would just like to state that Eric's, I strongly disagree with Eric's opinion on us ghosting anyone or dropping the ball in terms of coming to a master association agreement. We've been up here in the past to state that as a priority for us. We've been in negotiations with ClearView on that in the past. However, what became more of a priority that we had to get done was a settlement for prior damages from both ClearView and Gus Servos, the prior developer. And so, that was our biggest priority because we needed to get some financial assistance to take care of the roads that were damaged, which we just settled that. I don't have the exact date. I believe the very end of April. Got a check right around May first. Our prior HOA president, that did take a heavy load of the legal, heavy legal load for us, did move out of the sub this summer. And then, we, we re-engaged with ClearView to get back on the master, to which that was the first time we were told, "It's not happening." The shared maintenance agreement, I would not use the word agreement. Everything, all our emails back and forth, the shared was until we came, until we were able to finalize the master. It was always a temporary shared pricing agreement. So, we agree with a lot of the same things that Phase Two has in terms of ClearView as a neighbor and how they treat, you know, our, our neighborhood. We do have a little bit of a difference in how, you know, we've been fighting for years for this master. Because as Phase One residents, we feel that's necessary to have, to both protect us and to have a fully seamless functioning community going forward.
Question for you. When you say master, you're talking about a master HOA agreement?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. And, and you are the president, so...
Current president.
The, the Homeowners Association has been turned over on Phase One from the developer to the owners?
Correct, for quite a, for, I don't know, two years, three years? Yeah, something like that.
I'm, I thought something Justin said sounded like it hadn't been, but I...
Justin's Phase Two has not...
Understood that.
That, that would be my, my Phase, Phase Two has not been for a building yet.
Okay. Okay, thank, thank you. Yes, sir, back in the way back there.
Hi, good evening, y'all. My name's Rudy Gonzalez. I'm a resident of Eagle Ridge Phase One at 5411 Morgan Lake Drive. I just wanted to come here and, um, Matt, Matt, Phase One HOA already hit a lot of the things, but one thing I just wanted to bring up is that it was my understanding that before Phase Two was approved for construction to start, we were supposed to be working on a master HOA agreement, and that while Phase Two was pending approval, that both parties were trying to work in good faith to reach an agreement, and that from my perspective, as soon as Phase Two was approved and construction started, that kind of drifted away. And so, it's very frustrating to see all this stuff happen that I don't, never expected to happen. I remember when I purchased my home, when I signed my purchase agreement in like 2019 as I'm leaving the Marine Corps, retiring, moving to Michigan, and I read that, living in a HOA for the first time, reading that HOA agreement, and I remember reading about how the HOA was going to be turned over to the residents based upon how homes were developed, and once the homes reached a certain point, that we were going to get control. But in, in, in reality, what happened was, is once Phase One was done, the Phase One developer said, "Oh, we're going to have a new HOA for Phase One to Phase Two. We're going to turn it over to you now, and then Phase Two's going to be a new HOA." So, from my perspective, kind of like what's going on in, in Phase Two, is the builder says, "Hey, we don't have to turn it over until we get to this point." But then, for us, they didn't have to turn it over until they got to that point, and then they decided, "Hey, we don't want to go any further with Phase One. We're going to sell it. We're going to make this a new phase." Everything we said we're going to do with, with this HOA changes now because this new, this new thing is, is a separate phase. So, I just ask that this board please advocate on our behalf as, as residents of the townships, as taxpayers of the townships, as people that have kids in the schools and, and work in the community, and, you know, try to build that community, that you please hold ClearView to the fire and make them work with us in good faith so that we can have a, a reasonable HOA, so that when our stop sign gets hit by something at the front of the HOA, because that was just brought up, I think, by Justin about the stop sign being knocked down by potentially a construction vehicle, then when that happens, that it's not just the Phase One HOA residents who are responsible for repairing that stop sign, that that stop sign that everybody in the neighborhood, who lives through that one exit for, can have some ownership of that and have some stake in that. So, by having a master HOA agreement, it would really help us out. So, that's my plea to y'all today, is please take that in consideration and, uh, you know, do us one right. So, thank you all today.
Thank you. Anybody else? A lady over here on the, on my left.
Hi, I'm Brittany Nikolai, 5106 Merrifield Lane. I am in Phase Two. I just wanted to kind of go a little farther of what Justin said about a community of kids. I'm a mom of three, and there are hundreds of kids in our neighborhood. We fill an entire bus to Pineout Elementary, and that is just our elementary kids. And my kids have been on the receiving end of these ClearView vehicles flying through our neighborhood. I have three under the age of five, so they are little, and we are learning boundaries, and there is no chance to learn a boundary if a car is barreling through at forty miles per hour. I actually have had communication with our HOA. I mean, he doesn't have control of anything, but I've been in communication because we had a car that almost hit my five-year-old daughter, asking, begging actually, for the speed limit signs to be put to fifteen miles per hour. And we've been kind of just talked, as a community, talked about slowing down in there. And it's not our residents that are flying through there. It is ClearView people, contractors, flying through our neighborhood. I'm, you will find me under my driveway screaming at these people, "Slow down. We have babies." It's a problem. So, I just, I just wanted to say that. The Roar Road entrance for us, sorry, I had no intention of speaking tonight, but Justin kind of hit a nerve. The Roar Road entrance for us would be a huge deal. That would literally save so much traffic for our babies that are playing in this neighborhood. So, if you could take that into consideration, especially our Phase Two, Phase One kids are more elementary age, middle school, high school, because they've lived there a long time. But our Phase Two are literally babies. We have tons of kids in there. So, um, just if you could take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Mike Taylor. I am 5415 Morgan Lake. That is part of Phase One. So, I think in Phase Two, as well as Phase One, I think we've touched on it, like the HOA, it's written that there will eventually be a master HOA once the residency level gets to the point where the residents own the majority of the properties. I would imagine that Phase Two is written the same way, and I guarantee you, they are over that limit. So, the HOAs are supposed to be joined. It's in our paperwork. Also, with this many houses, to kind of touch on the school issue, we have one school bus pickup off of Maybe. Right now, if you come to our subdivision any morning on times where the bus is coming, there are so many vehicles lined up as parents waiting for their children, keeping them safe, especially in the winter, right? Which I fully understand and support, to the point that it's blocking traffic to enter and exit the sub. It's not safe for anybody. So, I'd like to understand, how are you going to access Phase Three and Four with one entrance? And I understand we're below the requirement for having a second entrance. I understand that. But like Justin said, if he's three-quarters of a mile in, there's going to be that many more cars that are going to have to drive their children when it's zero degrees outside to get them to the bus stop. And then, where do they go from there? There is no place to park at the front of our entrance. So, besides that, just to put another point, that ClearView does not respect the residents of our subdivision. Their model home is on the path to the bus stop as well as to the mailbox for Phase One. They have never cleared their sidewalks of snow or ice. They do the driveway, and that is all they do. If they can't even do that correctly, they do not respect the residents of our phases. Thank you.
Question for you?
Sure.
You said that it's in the paperwork that eventually you'll have a master HOA?
Yes.
What do you mean by paperwork?
So, the, the HOA paperwork that each of the residents was given and received as part of our paperwork from ClearView when we bought our homes.
Was it advertising brochures, or was it the master D?
It's the master D.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody? Uh, yes.
Thank you for your time. Adam Rosmanowski at 5531 Morgan Lake Drive. It'd be the second phase. And the one thing with the, the alternate entrance and exit going into Phase Three and Four, the one thing I propose with traffic coming through, trying to get to seventy-five or seventy-five, trying to get through into Clarkson, is the speed, I think was addressed earlier. Some way to, to regulate the traffic in and out, whether it's controlled entrance would be something I would like to see, as well as maybe speed bumps throughout, something to control traffic a little bit more. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? How about online? I'll open it up to anybody online that would like to speak. Sergio?
Yeah, Sergio.
Sergio, you want to say something?
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. We can't see you.
Okay. I'm, so I, this is the first time using this team, so I'm not really sure how to use it.
If you want, there's probably a little camera button somewhere that you probably need to click on, but we can hear you fine.
Here we go.
Name and address, uh, please.
Hello, uh, my name is Sergio Sarmiento. I live at 4578 Roar Road. I live right next to that emergency access path that, uh, everybody there is considering trying to change to a main entrance. And I am strongly opposed to that. My wife and I are strongly opposed to that. It's been nothing but a nuisance lately, well, well, since the past five years since they put that road in, with cars constantly trying to drive through there, four-wheelers, dirt bikes, walkers, dog walkers, everybody cutting through our yard, over our yard, through our driveways, trying to use it as a cut-through when we were told it's going to be an emergency access only. Emergency vehicles will be gated, taken care of, and it, they put up a gate in the middle of nowhere that does absolutely nothing. They told us to contact the fire department, to get it moved to the back property line to help prevent that, because we had... to help prevent that, because we have disabled children that live at our house, and it is unsafe for that to be an entry for multiple vehicles, another hundred-plus vehicles, and that's just one vehicle per house, to be coming next to our house. So we are strongly opposed to that being anything other than emergency access.
Is that it? Thank you.
That's it. Yep.
Anybody online want to make a comment?
I would like to comment. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
We can hear you. Please state your name and address.
My name is Jalen Vance. My address is five one one three, Meyerfield Lane. My concern is, I'm on Meyerfield Lane, which backs up to this new phase. I'm in lot five. My lot probably backs up to lot one sixty-five on this plan that you can see here. What you can't see on the plan is that this, the edge of this is I seventy-five. So my concern is that they're going to clear too many trees, that the decibels, the sound levels, will increase in our subdivision, majorly when they do that. Also, I'm concerned that we will be able to visually see it from our lots, which will affect our property values.
All done? All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yep.
I'm sorry. Keep going if you have more you want to say.
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Anybody else online? Anybody in the audience? I thank you for all your comments, and I thank you all for being respectful. I will close the public hearing at seven twelve. So, Megan, there appear to be a number of issues that are centered around the impacts on wetlands and woodlands, many of which are caused by grading and building in and near these areas. Would you like to elaborate on those?
Sure. There are a couple of things. Also, I want to note that Mr. Oppen, I had a conversation with the applicant on Friday, where we, of last week, or Thursday, where we reviewed a number of these things. In terms of, on our letter, under topography, we noted that behind lots one hundred and seven through one hundred and eleven, there's some grading, and then there was tree preservation that was shown. We felt that that was not the correct tree preservation line to show, because whenever there's grading, if you're more than ten feet away from, within ten feet of a tree line, you likely are going to damage their roots. So when we talked to the applicant, they said they are more than willing to, in all cases where there would be grading, to show where that tree line would really be, ten feet off from where the grading ended, and also to add tree protection things on the site plan so they can be held accountable to make sure that the appropriate fencing is up, to make sure that that happens, so that the trees that they're saying will be, are to be preserved, will be preserved. Also, we noted that there was a removal of wetland, removal of trees behind lots one fifty-four to one fifty-six. The applicant has said that there's really no trees there that was conflicting with the information that was on the site plan, so that's something to further explore with them. And then we also noted for wetlands that, number one, they do not have an Eagle permit. They have not applied for one yet. They do not have a township wetland permit. They will need these. It is unusual for an applicant to be before you without applying for the township wetland permit, but the township ordinances allow this process. So while I know this is, might feel unfamiliar to you, and that they maybe haven't checked a box that they were supposed to, they're allowed to go through the process in this way, and they have chosen to do so. They have taken out, as they mentioned, this is one of several iterations of the plan, they have taken out any wetland encroachments from the lots themselves. However, we did note that there were several lots where the twenty-five-foot wetland buffer was still in the lot and near the building envelope. And the reason we mentioned this is because wetlands grow and shrink. That's the reason for the twenty-five-foot buffer. That twenty-five-foot buffer isn't necessarily the guaranteed, that a wetland won't go more than twenty-five feet. So wanted to flag that for you as a concern for us, and that ideally, these wetland buffer requirements setback would not be in a residential lot at all. But again, you are bound by the permit conditions and the lot configurations that were shown in that associated plan. That's your standard to, to judge them by. So they still do have the opportunity for that many lots in roughly those configurations.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
They have the opportunity for that many lots, but they've got to meet the concerns we have about encroaching in woodlands. And if it takes cutting back lots to do that, then that's what it takes, correct?
I think that's a conversation with the applicant, and then to, then that's ultimately a decision for the township board as well, but you can make recommendations and, and absolutely express your concerns.
Mr. Chair? Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Megan, the same, you wouldn't need an Eagle permit and a township permit for the same wetland, would you? It'd be one or the other?
You, you need both.
For the same wetland?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
We also had been asked previously, there's an area that is shown where a wellhouse would be, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Oppen and to Mr. Longhurst about those. But it was asked whether the required area around those could be excluded from open space. And when you look at the definition of open space for a PRD, it's that the open space remain in its natural state or be restricted for use of active or passive outdoor recreation purposes harmonious with peaceful, single-family residential uses and in the development. So that's the standard that, for that open space. However, we noted that even if that was excluded from the open space calculations, the proposed plan would likely still need that overall twenty percent requirement that's in the PRD.
Mr. Chair? I have a question about wetlands.
Relating to something she just said, or should we let? Okay, go ahead.
Do you know if the wetlands are protected or unprotected?
There is a protected wetland on it. That's the reason that they have to apply to Eagle, that's the road crossing. There is a wetland that is not protected, or it's questionable. That would be further explored in the wetland permit, where, and again, I'll defer to the township engineer, where they're proposing to store their stormwater and to use that area.
Okay. Because I, I would just say that it needs to be very clear which is protected and not protected, because it can run into issues later on. And has anyone from the township done a tree inventory?
No.
Megan, I'm sorry, would, would you like to continue?
Sure. I want to note that we also talked to the applicant about the unit information, which we had flagged where there were some inconsistencies in terms of the width in the lots. They said that that was essentially a typographical errors by their engineer, and that they would correct those. Then also, in terms of site access and, and circulation, a lot of things have come up about Roar Road. In the permit conditions, that's shown as an emergency entrance. If the, that was to be changed, the permit conditions would need to be changed. Also, as folks in the, this is not in our letter, but as it's come up in the public hearing, a restriction on construction that would be above and beyond what the township ordinance is. So it was asked that one day, on a weekend, be exempt from construction. That would have to be a change in the permit conditions as well. In terms of safety paths and sidewalks, I need to make an apology. The conceptual development plan that was in our letter was a previous approval. In your packet, there was the current PRD plan, if you, that's associated with the permit conditions. When you look at that, the applicant is correct in that they have provided more trails than were, than were required for this phase. However, what I would ask the planning commission to do in your deliberations and in your communications to the applicant, is to look at those and see whether they meet the intent in terms of connectivity, connecting to other phases, and whether the places where they put the proposed paths are functional in terms of creating a non-motorized network. And that would be your job to weigh in on that, and then ultimately the township board to make approvals on whether that non-motorized network as proposed meets the permit conditions. In terms of landscaping, we also flagged that during Phase Two, the applicant had been required to provide landscape screening at the rear yards of budding Roar Road. And in our conversations with the applicant, it was brought up that there was a swale that was put in, and so those original tree preservation areas couldn't happen due to some other infrastructure. What they've done in this plan is they have made sure that their tree preservation areas pulled away from where those swales are, and they have looked to augment the areas that they're proposing to preserve, to screen the adjacent residents on Roar Road. Again, it's up to you, planning commission, to look at what they've proposed, to see whether that is sufficient to meet what you feel are the screening requirements and what's in keeping with the permit conditions for the PRD. In terms of lighting, there was no street lighting proposed. In terms of signs, there wasn't an entry sign proposed. And overall, we had concerns about the submission of a wetland permit, that the minor lot widths and areas are adjusted, and I think that's been, that has been addressed. And in terms of recording of an updated road maintenance agreement by the township attorney, that was one of our requests for you to look at. In conversations with the township attorney, we feel that that is not necessi, our request wasn't in keeping with what is the requirements, legal requirements, and what the township is able to do, because it's a agreement on private roads between two entities. Ideally, it would be worked out, and there would be one maintenance agreement. However, this is not a matter in which, let me rephrase, this would not be an issue to look at any sort of denial about, because that's, that's not one of the standards in, in the PRD. It would be something that you could weigh into and give advice to the applicant about, but it wouldn't be a good reason for a sole justification of a recommendation of a denial.
Okay. Off that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just, I got just two questions. I know there's going to be hundreds, but these are just, one chart on page two, where it gives the phases and the lot sizes and whatnot. Under total proposed, the rightmost column, the, it says forty lots, thirty-seven percent. You see the grid there?
Rightmost column?
Right, yeah, total proposed column.
Eighty-six lots, yeah. Forty percent.
Okay, then I must have an old version then, because I've got forty lots.
You said about page two of your report?
Yeah, Phase Two. It's the sixty by one hundred and twenty-foot lot. All the way over to the right, it says they're proposing sixty-seven, where it used to be seventy-three. Phase Two had twenty. So I come up with eighty-seven lots, and this is forty. I don't know how that works.
So I'm looking at what's in the packet.
Joe, you're on page two?
I'm on page two, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The Carlisle Ward member.
Oh, that's Sticks' report.
Yeah.
So that, that report was written, this report, I think, was written before the February fifth report. So this report, the history report was written January thirtieth.
Okay. Well, I mean, what's the right number of lots, eighty-seven or forty?
The right number of lots is eighty-six, which is forty percent of the total proposed, and that's per our letter dated February fifth.
Okay, I guess I have an older one. I got the one dated January thirtieth.
That's the, they're both in the packet, so that's.
Well, then let me ask you another, you know, just a quickie, and it may not pertain to this. When I did all the math, whatnot, which I won't go through the details, but I took like the lot sizes, the number of lots and all that, and I got the square footage for, let's say, the sixty by one hundred and twenty-foot lot, based on eighty-seven or eighty-six, and I come up with the square footage for that. I came up with the original proposal and the new proposal, that the square footage of these lots in this chart has increased by about five-point-three acres. And I'm wondering where the five-point-three acres grew from. Okay, I will get back with you later. I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, no, I, I think I can explain. So it's not, it's that the number of lots, I think there is probably five-point-three acres that are either, open space was taken out, or that it came from roads, or it came from other common spaces. Also, they shifted the number of bigger lots.
Yeah, I saw that.
And whatnot. So on something this size, for that amount of acreage, to get your exact answer, you would need to get that from the applicant, or you would need to have, you're probably an engineer, go through and do all the measurements.
I'm not worried about whether it's five-point-three acres or four-point-two. I just was wondering, like, where you said, where did it come from? And did that violate some other things? Like, if it came from roads, now are the roads insufficient? I'm just making this up.
Well, if I may.
The numbers are changing. The acreage came from someplace, did it now violate the original agreement by taking it from someplace which is unidentified where it came from? I'll get with you later, you know, because we can't resolve this.
Well, the PRD is a, is a concept plan, so it's a general plan. And then the final site plan, which is before you to be recommended to the township board, is the fine detailed plan. So it would not be unusual for under ten acres between the concept plan and the detailed plan to shift in different ways, just because in the concept plan, you're not going to do the amount of engineering that needs to be done at this level in terms of figuring out your stormwater and roads and things like that.
Again, I'm not interested, you know, I'm not really questioning so much whether it's ten acres or five acres. I just want to know if something was violated in the process of doing it, that's all.
And I would say, no, not, nothing's been violated, that this is an expected thing when you go from a concept plan to a final plan.
Okay. But on top of that, over the years, the number of lots has grown from two hundred and eight to two hundred and thirty-four?
That is true, yes.
For reasons like they eliminated some attached units, they added a small strip of land, they made other adjustments. So it has grown.
It's only been thirty-some years.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, a couple of questions for you. Could you discuss any, you know, most of your items are engineering items, but anything you think we should address now? And in particular, could you explain the well issue, the road through wetlands, and the use of wetlands for stormwater retention?
Sure. I think those are probably the key ones that are site plan related. So I'll start with the, the well site. So the applicant's required to provide a well as part of their PRD agreement. The well's been installed, it's been tested. In our letter and in a supplemental letter from the DPW, there's some additional water sampling or quality testing that the DPW is requesting, just to confirm the, the water that's there.
Brian, for the audience, could you bring that, a site plan up that shows where that well is proposed to be? Go ahead.
That's in Phase Two, right?
Yeah.
And then in the, kind of in the back of our letter, we had noted, so in, in conversations with the DPW, in order for the well site, for them to be viable, they need to have a dedicated access to that area. So we kind of laid out some parameters for that. The wat, the water sewer, stormwater on the master plan for that area. And then when the, the site plan comes up on the screen here, we'll see there's a, there's an isolation distance that's shown on their site plan. It does encroach over some of the rear yards of a few of the lots. So there may, there would need to be deed restrictions on those lots and what could, could or could not be done there. And then there was also an encroachment into a, a fore bay for one of the detention ponds that would need to get relocated out of that area. And then the DPW would need the entire area to be mass graded and slopes to be adhered to in order for them to ultimately construct a well on that. So it would have to be kind of laid out as basically a pad site. So that, that area would need to be cleared and graded and, you know, ready for a well should one be installed.
Who decides when that gets built and what kind of structures would you like see on it?
That would be up to the DPW to install if at some point in their modeling it was determined to be a need.
And that would be dependent upon water usage within the township?
Correct.
Whether we need to augment that?
Correct.
Okay.
There's one building there now in Phase Two.
Yeah. I don't think, or if it's in Phase Two or one.
Yeah, so that's water, I think.
Is it, that's water, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
It's a lift station.
So, oh, it's a lift station?
I think it is.
So it's sewage?
No, I, I think it's well, isn't it? There's a sewer lift station.
Oh, sewer, yeah. Because they're gonna have to do another one in this case.
So with the requirements to provide access to that, it's gonna impact the arrangement of some of the lots because I believe there's only a twelve foot wide pathway area that's being showed to feed that area now. And to get to the forty feet that the DPW is asking, there will need to be some reconfiguring and some grading associated with that because that area of the site has some relatively steep slopes on it.
Good.
That.
So that's behind one eleven, one twelve?
It's one, so the access comes between one twenty-five and one twenty-six on the kind of left side of the screen that you're seeing. So the, that shaded pathway is where the accessory would be. And then the, the well site, Brian, can you go to C three point O? Do you have that one? I have an idea. This is the applicant's. Okay. Yeah, so on your, in your packet, the C three point O, there's a circle.
Yeah.
That's isolated there that shows the well isolation distance. And you can see the, the encroachments into the lots that we're talking about. In general, that's the well comments that we, we put in our letter there. So are there any questions on that?
See ya.
I got a couple. For Megan, if we're counting the wellhead area as a common area, like you said earlier, or open space, right? How can that be, if, if the intent of building a wellhouse is gonna be, you know, big industrial, you know, brick building like the rest of the, you know, it's a, it's a brick and masonry building that the wellhouse go in. How is that even, can it be even calculated as any kind of open space with the, knowing that the, you know, that it's not going to be at some point? And then it's gonna need fencing all around it and whether they put barbed wire on top of it or not or whatever, like the rest of the wellheads that we have around the township. In the middle of this backyard area, all of a sudden we erect a big commercial wellhouse in the middle of their backyards, basically.
So I think there's two points. Is, and please clarify for me if I'm getting this correct. One, could, does the wellhouse and the surrounding area that's need, that has to be kept clear, does that count as open space under the PRD? And the answer would be that if that space could be used by the residences as open space, then yes. So the building likely not. Again, as we said in our review, there's so much open space preserved that taking this spot out probably wouldn't affect those numbers. But you would be well within your rights to ask them to run those numbers, taking the wellhouse or whatever area out. And I would defer to your township engineer as to what area of those surrounding the wellhouse could be used as open space and could qualify.
Yeah, and then conversations with the DPW, it would basically be the entire isolation area would be encompassed by the wellhouse, the parking lot, the wells, that, so that entire area.
Which is going in people's yards right now, proposed lots. Into their backyard. Second question, and this is on a totally different, just a general question. So for clarity, they're asking for special land use is what they're asking for, right? And how is that different than a final site plan approval?
So by the PRD requirements in the zoning ordinance, it treats a final site plan as a special land use. So it'd be the same as if they were in a commercial area and they were asking for a drive-through where it's required as a special land use.
Okay, so it's being treated as the same? I just, it's, it's what I wanted to make sure. We're not doing, because sometimes we do a special land use and then we go back and do, you know, a final site plan and all the nuts and bolts. So this is all encompassing in the PRD?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's gotta meet the conditions of the PRD as well as the criteria for special land use, however.
The permit conditions.
Permit.
The permit.
But, but also there's criteria for granting a special land use, spelled out in the special land use section.
Well, it's, it's, it, it has to be final site plan approval based on the permit conditions. And obviously, any deviations that they're calling for, if they're not spelled on the permit conditions, then those need to be amended. So that's essentially what, what you're doing tonight is approving. It's the whole, I mean, as a concept plan, it received approval from the board. So now each phase comes back for essentially final site plan approval, but each one of those requires a special land use. So that's how the PRD works.
Let me get some, I'm a little confused.
And then the special land use goes to the township board and they ultimately approve it.
Right. So this is, this is a little different because, because of the permit conditions, we have to take this back to the township board.
Yeah, if you're gonna, if you're gonna amend any permit conditions, yeah, the board is gonna have to do that if they approve it.
But this still would go, even if we weren't amending permit conditions, it still goes to the township board?
Yes, correct.
For final approval.
Yes.
Are we, I'm sorry, I don't know if page right, are we still talking with Jason?
Jason, Jason's turn.
There's the wellhead.
Yep, yeah, so the, on the, on the screen now, you can see the, the test well is shown in the center with that dash radius of the two hundred foot isolation distance.
Okay.
Stormwater management for the site's pretty complicated, given the, all of the, the network of wetlands that, that are surrounding the site. So again, as we've discussed already tonight, the, there will be a permit required from Eagle because there are Eagle regulated wetlands on the site. The applicant's proposing to use a single wetland shown on this sheet here, kind of in the middle of the page, as part of their stormwater management or detention system. We are suspecting that Eagle may regulate that wetland just because of the proximity to their other regulated wetlands. So that would be something that would need to get ironed out as they go through the approval process for the wetlands through Eagle and through the township. And then depending on how that plays out, they may need to make some revisions to their stormwater management system to address those, you know, whatever those permit conditions are there.
My understanding is with increased requirements and stuff, that's not commonly done anymore, using wetlands for storm.
Using wetland for storage is not commonly done. But ultimately, again, they're Eagle regulated wetlands, so it'll be up to them to make the final decision on if that can or cannot be done.
But if I understand, we also, they have to get a permit from us for that too, right?
Correct.
Correct.
What are the alternatives to stormwater retention if you don't use the wetlands?
They would have to provide a basin separate from that. That would still outlet to the wetlands, but the wetland would be classified as storage.
And filter system?
Yep, they have mechanical forays and sediment basins are already accounted for in their design. So they're treating the stormwater in accordance with the township's standards.
And how about the road through the wetlands?
Same thing, that's, so that's something that would require a permit from Eagle. And then depending on the amount of fill that is being done, it may require mitigation. If they exceed thresholds, then the township has any standards for mitigation outside of what Eagle would require.
I'm, I'm clear on that.
Would you analyze that construction for us to make sure that it, the impact it'll have on those wetlands? I mean, I'm not a wetlands expert, but it seems like the water still needs to kind of go under the roads somehow and still be able to move in and out of the wetlands.
Yeah, we would look at that globally to make sure that the proposal that they're doing is not blocking any path, right? Eagle would look at the same thing.
I'll just go on record and say for that reason, I feel we need more information on that construction, not that now before, while we're looking at the site plan and not make that after the fact issue. Okay, question?
I was just gonna flip through the letter, a couple of other minor bullet points. We did point out some grading issues where we were asking for either additional information or for slopes to be reduced or identified on the plan series. There were a few of those. Stormwater management kind of were touched on. And then we did also ask for the water main. The township standards required for those to be extended kind of around the cul-de-sac. It doesn't have to loop around and connect back, but we are asking for it to be moved further around the cul-de-sac because they've gone about halfway and they're currently out. So that's identified here. I believe that's the, the highlights of the comments that would be impactful to a, a site plan. The remainder are just things that they'll need to work forward as part of the construction drawings.
Okay. Okay. Questions from the commission?
I don't know if it's questions, but I got comments. How about that? Let's do that, okay. I have a lot of the same concerns that the homeowners did and I did when I did Phase Two. I was on the planning commission back then and just got back on. I don't know how, I don't know how you do it without an entrance to Roar Road. And I sympathize with Sergio, I believe his name was, who would be severely impacted. It's a long ways back. The fire department, if they mandate that you gotta get, they gotta have access no matter what. So there's gonna be an emergency exit. I would be in favor of researching it being a, a, a bigger permanent landscaped boulevard type entranceway coming in from Roar to alleviate some of the concerns and, and traffic of the, of the residents. That's one item. The wellhead area, we gotta, the whole plan's gotta be revamped to meet that criteria to some extent. So that, it's certainly not ready for, in my opinion, for any sort of moving forward at this point yet. Are there currently trails on the property? Walking paths? They're denoted on the plan. You can see I'm faintly running through it. You know, underneath the, the design, or they?
Well, Phase One no longer exists. They were never actually there. They've never actually been there.
Okay, so there's.
The one that was in the second phase, second walking path, but no.
Okay, it's just they show the, the idea of them on C three one, you know, underlying in the plan. That's why I asked from an old plan.
Well, remember, this was an old golf course.
Right.
There's still some faint.
Okay, I don't, yeah, so that's why I'm asking, because I'm looking deep into the print, you know? And you can see things that are kind of faint. That's an issue. The walking path material is a concern, especially in this type of environment. The deterioration, the sinking of it, if it was mulch or something like that, it's just gonna be a mess. That's never, you know, it's gotta be something substantial, in my opinion. So I'd want more information on that. The non-motorized network and path system is, is, to me, is a huge issue, that the paths go nowhere. There's no connectivity, there's no walkability, there's only sidewalks on one side of the road. So that leaves us open for a lot of issues with the residents and, and young families. I see that there's some, the, the preservation and tree preservation along Roar Road, most of it is shown on the other side of the property, on the existing property, not on this property. So that certainly looks weak at best. The, the exposure to the highway is huge. There's no, no landscaping proposed to protect the townships and the residents in this neighborhood from the expressway. There's more plants to hide the detention ponds than there are to protect the residents from the expressway. The sound is definitely gonna be an issue. If they take any more down, they need, that would be something I would definitely wanna be talking about. The roads themselves are an issue. I, I don't know how much more they could take for this kind of construction without opening up the back gate, which again is detrimental to those residents, which I feel bad for. Those are, those are, let's see, what else did I have notes? I, I think that, I think that we gotta take a real look at how we're gonna get back there and do all this. I think it's the density, the lack of connectivity, the lack of buffering and, and flow of the project. It could be done way better. Because of the history of this project, and it's been a long negative history of this project with the residents, I think that it warrants some sort of discussion if we're gonna go back and adjust permit conditions looking at some regulations or stipulations on construction adjacent to the occupied homes. Wouldn't, wouldn't bother me to have that talk. I don't think we can barricade, we can't put in, you know, speed bumps. That's outside the parameter of what we can enforce, especially if, I don't know if it's a county road, are they county roads?
No.
Private roads, so that's something they could, they could implement. I don't know that we could. The grading issues, the, the multiple homeowner associations. I mean, there's a lot of things, but biggest things I've got is, is, is the access to the site through the other neighborhoods. It's way back. The buffering of the residents who are being impacted by it along Roar Road and the exposure to I seventy-five. The wellhead and the wetland protection and the walkability of the sidewalks. I'm gonna say those are, those are my, those are the key, key items that I, I'm would like to have more discussion about and try to clean, clean up a little bit. And that's all for right now.
Other members? Alinda?
I would like to ask a question. On Phase Two, what is the percentage of completion in Phase Two? Is it a hundred percent complete?
No. Do you want completion or occupancy?
No, completion. How much of? Fifty percent?
There's a dozen houses in process.
Seventy-five percent.
As of January, it was seventy-five percent.
Okay, and the same owner owned, did Phase Two, that's doing Phase Three and Four, is that correct? So, I mean, I think it would make a huge difference if Phase Two were turned over to the owners as far as the HOA. I know I'm not supposed to talk about HOA, but this is a huge issue. I mean, you can't just, you know, pretend it's not. It is a huge issue. And if, if they at least had control of Phase One and Two, I would see how, I would think that would help if the, if the actual owners that live there had control of those two HOAs. Another question is, why is Roar Road an emergency? Is there no way to make it just a regular entrance?
It was done during the original approval of this project as there was gonna be two emergency access points off Roar.
Could we change it?
Well, township board has the ability to change it, yes. And if you're, if that is felt strongly by the commission, then you need to express that. You know, possibly in, in your motion, if you make a motion tonight, to pass it to the board, then you would want that as a record, you know, something they consider.
I, I wasn't around then, but wasn't the access limited as a result of some feedback from the Roar Road residents?
Yes, the, in the original approvals of this, the Roar Road residents came out in full force and, and the township, you know, obliged, you know, basically fell, fell to those complaints and felt that they should do it the way they did it.
Well, maybe there's a compromise if the road were better as far as an entrance so that it wouldn't affect the Roar residents immediately to the side of it or.
Yeah, I'm sure there's many ways that they could protect those two residences if they were made an entrance. Through landscaping, fencing, all kinds of things that they could do.
And I'm just gonna bring this up because it's a passion. There needs to be a maintenance agreement for the stormwater detention basins. Agreement between the town. Agreement between the township and the landowner as called for in our code.
Jason, you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, so I think we've had some conversations with township and staff here and we're really working on putting some presentations together to address that concern going forward.
But aren't you getting-
As part of our engineering supplemental, when we do get those, we will have them identify a maintenance schedule and sequence on the plans for what is required to be done and the frequency for, you know, that maintenance, so that will be on the plans.
Brad?
I guess I was gonna just chime in for what Sam said. I think the screening and even to me, sound walling, like along seventy-five somehow needs to be addressed. And also the one resident where, she said she backed up to lot one sixty-five. I'm not sure if it was one sixty-five or one sixty-three, right in that area anyway. To make sure, you know, if we're taking, right now, they're showing quite a bit of woodland screening. I guess I just wanna make sure, because she said she was fearful that she, it would-
Yeah.
Be cleared to where, you know, it'd be open to her vision as well. So to me, screening along that, that outside is, like along seventy-five and up along the residence to the west there has to be addressed, so.
Just a minute, I'll get to you in a minute. I have a comment in that regard. Megan, I think you addressed some of the, on phase two backing up to Roar Road, there was a comment, a request for screening on there, and the answer was that there was a pretty good woodland growth already existed between the phase two and the Roar Road properties, and that would be maintained and serve as a screening. That woodlands is gone, and I think you said that was because of a swale that had to be removed. Shouldn't the developer have done something in place of that to meet the spirit of that comment?
I can't.
Well, I know that buffering requirements aren't required as we, as, on this project as they typically are in what we do with PUDs. I know that we did walk that site, I think Jason, you and I did, as well as Eric from the Clearview side, because a lot of, there was structures from Roar Road residents, like sheds and things, that were actually over the property line once it got surveyed. And we tried to do our best effort to maintain all the trees there and still accommodate the stormwater, the head, you know, management that had to go in, so.
Okay.
Now, I think that's, there's also a lot of trees here that they could probably do a better job of saving overall, not just on the border.
So could we require a tree inventory?
Sure.
And so the stormwaters aren't even put in, is that what you're saying?
No, not in three and four, no, but in two, yes. Yeah, 'cause that was a, you know, I know some of the commissioners back in phase two, that was originally approved in twenty nineteen, that they wanted a buffer, but I remember that in that, in those discussions, you couldn't require a buffer, a tree buffer there, like typical PUDs where we had buffers around them.
Why can't you require them?
Well, I think that it wasn't clear in the original permit conditions and, and Sam, I think you were actually the one who wanted the buffer, the buffer.
Probably.
You were, you know, 'cause I know that, but you know, and I, I can't remember the history of why you couldn't, okay? So I'd have to go back and look, but I know it was pointed out in one of Vic's reviews at some point about that.
I guess my question, being a PRD, you know, and it's the only one we have, so we're not all well versed on them like PUDs, but, you know, if everything is based upon a permit condition, then what, what, what's the latitude that we have for the township board to change the permit conditions upon a recommendation from the planning commission? I mean, it's just, it's, we're, you know, to amend it to be more palatable of a, of a project. So I didn't, I kinda wanna know like what, you know, what, we got, we're being tied, we're, it's like a, we're being, I feel like we're being tied down, but not, I'm not super clear on what's tying me down and how, you know, and I like to push things more than be tied down, you know, so. Or at least get to, you know, what we can do. What are our rights, you know, 'cause this is something that, you know, we don't, I don't wanna make decisions and then everybody be mad that we did, you know, that we made a decision. I wanna make sure that we were within the latitude of the law, but able to do what we feel would be the best thing to do.
Yeah.
I'm not crystal clear on where the line is right now.
Similar to PUDs, the permit conditions are a legal document that the board approves, that kind of memorializes the project. That is a board function ultimately, but with this plan, if you feel that, okay, you wanna make that a formal entrance on the Roar, or you wanna, however you see fit, I think you should recommend that. When you get to the time of a recommendation to take this to the board, that should be part of your motion.
Things to discuss.
Essentially, that we recommend that the board, you know, consider that entrance as a formal, formalized entrance. Or maybe you just want it to be a construction entrance, something like that, okay? And, you know, that way the board has an idea of what you guys as a commission would really recommend there. I know it's, it's like the chicken and the egg, though, it's-
It's not, we know that there's gonna be a subdivision built there.
Yeah.
We just wanna get the best possible outcome of the subdivision. There's nobody saying we don't want, you know, it's not gonna get built.
Yeah, that's the thing.
I wanna know what we can do to make it as palatable, less impactful, and have less negative impact on the surrounding people, and how far can we, you know, what can, you know, how far can we go? So it sounds like we can, we have the latitude to make suggestions to the board to revisit the permit conditions.
Yeah, so-
That's what you're saying.
Yeah, and so when it gets to the board, they will consider the special land use and they will likely consider those ideas that you've presented already and the residents have commented about. They'll take that into consideration and, and either make that, you know, have our township attorney work with their, you know, Clearview's attorney to work out those documents and to what the board is wishing.
So would the proper procedure be to, do we, you know, would, if we wanna have, have some discussion with the board, would the proper petition be to table it with a list, deny it with a list? I mean, how do we move it for, you know, we don't wanna, you know, it's gonna move forward, so we might as well just stick on the path, but how do we control the movement? What's the path?
I think you need to address the site plan issues before you push this forward. That's just, just in listening to the comments and the comments of our consultants, it sounds like to me that there's still some items to be addressed.
So do we have the ability to make a list of site plan issues like connectivity and buffering and all of that? Have them make those changes, then come back to us again and see where we're at at that point before we recommend it to the board? Would that be the normal steps?
Just like a normal site plan.
Okay.
Well, and I'm wondering if we, if we might need a, it might not be a good idea to have a subcommittee. 'Cause there's a, to me, there's a lot of issues here that need to be resolved. Rather than doing it, you know, maybe we need a subcommittee to do it, you know, between now and whenever it comes back.
How would that work?
Well, or we do a pre-application meeting.
Same thing.
Just do another one.
Yeah.
This won't be pre-
Procedure question.
Yeah, but I think, I think, yeah, I mean, I think you need to have a very succinct list, you know, a numbered list. And so, so that can be presented to the applicant and they can decide whether they just wanna roll through this or they wanna make the changes necessary.
Joe?
Proceedurally, I was just wondering, you know, if, I understand it's the board's decision on like permitting condition amendments or changes or something, and then you were saying that that could be part of the recommendation for site plan approval. But what if we split those two out and said, could we just go to the board and ask for, here's our recommendations on the permit condition amendments, to see their reaction so that we would know we might wanna make some different site plan recommendations based on what we hear?
Well, the site plan is tied to the special land use, so, you know, I mean, I think for the board to make, you know, a decision on that, they need to see the whole package, you know? They just do. You know, I get it, but even with, you know, a few new board members, the, the whole board is not gonna know what, you know, yeah, we can go through history and all that with the board, but I think it's best served that they get a proper recommendation from the commission on what they should change or at least consider changing, and they can agree with you or not.
Sam?
So my quandary is this. If we can't, if I can't feel comfortable that there's some, you know, some cohesiveness between the road agreements, which I know that's different than we're talking about, you know, and who's gonna take care of it, then, you know, it's hard to decide whether or not I wanna push for another entranceway. Because if we're not gonna get an agreement and we're not gonna, and we're not gonna be able to satisfy the, you know, the needs of the residents. You know, if there was a way to work out keeping one entrance and doing a construction entrance and then an emergency entrance, that's one thing, but, you know, but if, if, if there's gonna be animosity, there's gonna be damage to the roads, there's not gonna be a guarantee of them being repaired by, you know, by the heavy construction traffic, then I would be leaning hypothetically towards a separate entranceway. If there was cohesiveness in that in an agreement, then maybe I would consider the impact on the Roar Road people who are being dragged into this unwillingly, you know, who live there. So it's, it's really, it's hard to, you know, this is a tough one because there's a lot of outcomes and a lot of different ways it could play out, but we don't know how everybody's gonna play, you know, how it's gonna play out. I personally think that the road is too long for a one entranceway, but I also am very sympathetic to the people and the traffic that would be driven down another community's road too, and everyone should, you know, that's, that's an issue too, so. So I don't know, I, you know, so I got, I've just kind of been torn on how the best way to go about it is. I mean, I can, I think we could come up with a list of things we'd like to see or that would be better that we, you know, maybe that's the way, and then have the petitioner make those changes and see where it goes from there. Give them an opportunity, they've heard what we said clearly, you know, is that, does that seem like a-
I think that's, that's a fair approach.
Okay.
I have another question.
Belinda?
Okay, again, I'm gonna just make one more point. I mean, the approval could be give and take. So if this landowner for phase three and four also owns or developed phase two and is seventy-five percent complete, couldn't we not say as a condition of the permit, could, phase two needs to be released to the landowners?
No, we cannot.
As much as I like your idea, I can't be in favor of that, because that's governed by the bylaws that are already in place.
Yeah, we can't.
We have no authority to change that.
Why would we approve phase three and four, though, if, if phase one and two are in such disarray? I just, I don't understand why the township cannot say, why would we want more of that? Why don't we?
'Cause it's a private document, that's private, you know, it's a, it's not, it's not something that we can consider at all, you know, because it's a privately written document. Yes, the township approved that document, but ultimately, it's a private agreement between the homeowners and they all signed that those matching deed and bylaws when they bought the homes.
So why would we approve another phase three and four with the same kind of problems if, if we see one and two are not being taken care of? I don't, that doesn't make sense to me.
Well, it-
It's where you have jurisdiction.
Yeah, you don't-
You simply don't have jurisdiction over the HOA.
Okay.
You just can't.
So-
There are other things that you have jurisdiction over.
Okay, how can we say that?
So I think that you, what I've heard from you collectively, and I think Brian was saying this too, is that you have a number of concerns that the applicant should address those, come back. Probably best for them to go through a pre-application meeting with revised plans and then to come back to this board for you to make a decision on the finals, on a revised final site plan and special land use at that time. While you were always talking, I was trying to make a list of what I had heard. So what I started on was that lots are revised so that they are not in the two-hundred-foot radius of the wellhouse protection area, that the percentage of open space without the wellhouse and the protection area is noted on the site plan and meets that twenty percent. That the non-motorized connections are revised so that there's two, that there's sidewalks on both sides of the, sides of the street, and that the type of paving on pathways is specified and promotes connectivity. The trail system promotes connectivity. And then I'm not, those were what I had on my list, my-
Can I simplify it?
Sure.
I think, frankly, I think your two review letters are pretty much right on. And I, my thought would be just to make it, make them address all the comments that you two have made, and we could probably throw a few others on top of that, like recalculating of the open space without the well area and stuff like that.
And something for a landscaping point of view that's not in our letter is landscaping and noise buffering from I seventy-five.
And to the west, the housing to the west, yeah. Seventy-five is the main one, but-
She, oh, Roar Road?
Yeah, no, I'm talking of the residents that live to the west.
In phase two?
Yeah. I guess one more point is to bring up, to me, if, if the exit to Roar Road ever becomes a regular road, then to me, the layout of those two houses where that road would go through would have to be really looked at because, right, you know, being an emergency exit, I don't think there's as much egress area as you would normally have with a road, so. If, to me, if it's gonna go to a regular road, we need to protect more area there, you know, to turn in and out and everything else.
For the Boulevard?
Well, you know, to make it, to make it a road, if we're gonna make it a regular road.
Right.
Can you show us that?
Right now, the emergency exit, to me, doesn't have the same amount of room as, as a road would.
So maybe if one of those lots was eliminated, you could make a larger entrance, is what you're saying?
You're saying a bad word to-
I know, I know. I'm just saying maybe.
Well, I'm just saying, to me, the location of those or the size of them or whatever might have to be looked at, so. One or both of them, so.
Or restricted to a front entry garage on that pot, 'cause otherwise, 'cause if they put a side entry, it's gonna be right in the drive.
I'm just bringing this up as a caveat to, you know, the, if you make that a road, regular road, there's, there's other things that we need to look at as part of that layout and everything, so.
At which point do we get the wetland permit come into play? I mean, on other projects, we give them a wetland permit first.
It's concurrent with the site plan, yeah.
And now it's, now it's, we're going through this whole exercise and then we're gonna go, then we're gonna talk about wetland permits?
No.
Yeah, as I said earlier, per the zoning ordinance, they can take this route. It is not ideal, it is not how it's typically done, it is not what was encouraged.
So that discussion's been had?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Multiple times.
Well, it's been had, but we can still tell them we wanna see-
The planning commission can push on that.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Didn't we do something like that on that red bar? The project, eventually was turned down, the board turned down, but it was a wetland permission-
Typically, that's how you do it. You handle the wetland permit, then you handle the site plan, it's all done concurrently in the same meeting and you move on, you know?
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion- I'm gonna make a motion to deny the special land use at this time.
Can I interrupt you? Deny or postpone?
I'm gonna deny it. I can't postpone a special land use. Huh?
You can postpone.
Okay, will I postpone to a date uncertain?
Yeah, that, that way, that gives you time, yeah.
I'll make a motion on PC file two zero two four dash zero zero four. Petitioner clear of you homes, project name Eagle Ridge Estates, phase three and four, to postpone special land use approval to a date uncertain, taking into account all of the notes and comments of Carl Allen Wortman's report, Noah Kimfrause's report, fire department's report. Also would like to see, I'm gonna make a list of things that we would like to see and have addressed prior to coming back in front of us, one of them being a tree inventory of trees larger than eight, eight-inch caliber. Connectivity of pathways for non-motorized traffic along with the sidewalks being added on both sides of the street, and the pathway material being specified. The well protection area being completely free and clear of property boundaries and obstructions. Also, the open space percentage being confirmed with the elimination of the wellhead area, still meeting the ordinance. Emphasis on the buffering and sound control along I-75 and the housing in phase two to the west. And also, a letter or some sort of acknowledgement from Eagle saying that this, that there's a path to, to an approval from Eagle on the wetlands. Anything else?
I, I would like to say that we need to get a feeling how we all feel about a separate permanent entrance to rural road, I'm in favor of that, because I think we should add this into that stipulation, and then have the board consider the permit changes.
Well, I don't know if we want to address that on the plans right now, Megan.
I, I would say that you could ask the applicant to consider that as part of the postponement, and then you'll know whether they're willing to do that.
I'll make that request, that the applicant also acknowledge or let us know whether or not they're receptive to the idea of a second entrance way above and beyond emergency, emergency access.
Just to show what the layout would look like, too.
Yeah, okay, with, with, with an idea of, of how that would work, the buffering and the width and the size of such an entrance way being created, if, at their, if they, if they agree to such a thing. And then-
I would ask, I, I'd like to know just, you know, about this master deed requirements for a master HOA, I'd like to just get some more information on that, find out if that is indeed in the existing-
I think we can find out that-
They should, yeah.
Separately, or do we want to have them do that?
Well, they can provide the documentation.
In the next, before they come before us, to also provide us with the documentation outlining the master deeds for the, and the agreements between these phases that are currently existing and, and being proposed in the future.
Think you got it all?
Maybe not.
I just want to make one comment. When you first started out, I thought I heard you say PC file twenty twenty four dash zero zero four, and it says zero zero five on the meeting.
I'm reading the public notice, not the agenda, so sorry.
Well, it says number five on the agenda, and I guess I just want to make sure we've got the right number.
All right, I, yeah, the public notice is oh four, so sorry about that.
Okay, so it should be oh five.
I'll correct that to PC file two zero two four dash zero zero five.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Have, I don't want to make any, anything that you said, it's all great, but are we bringing this back here, or is there gonna be this still this pre-application meeting, or have we done away with that needed?
No, I, I think we should have one with the applicant.
Yeah, and that's, that's not, that doesn't have to be part of this motion, that's something that we can just implement at their, at their pleasure, you know?
When they're ready, then we'll schedule that.
I think it was discussed about pausing a day of a week, is that something we would address here with the applicant?
That would not be something, I don't think, not as part of the permit conditions, or not as part of the plan, that would be something we would take up at the board level when it got to that point, I believe, correct, Megan?
How would you take it, okay, in the fi- if, if we were to give a final site plan approval, that would be part of the recommendation, okay, got it.
Yeah, agreed. Anyone else want to add to my motion, it's a big one?
Good joint effort here.
Anyone want to support my motion?
I'll support.
Okay.
Do we need two people with support?
No, we got one, Jason. Why don't we do a roll call on this?
Jason Borschine.
Yes.
Sam Morocco.
Yes.
Bill Scarborough.
Yes.
Belinda Billy, yes. Joe Suter. Ron Ritchie.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I'd ask to thank all the people who came, ask you to please exit quietly and as quickly as you can. You're welcome to stay, though, we don't want to kick you out. Uh, next item, regular business, CC file two oh two four dash zero one one, Kirkco Manix. This is a request for a conceptual site plan approval for phase two of Monarch Road consisting of five one-story attached single-family housing units, totaling total of fifteen units. Even though most of our audience is less, Megan, you want to give a brief explanation of the project?
Sure, this is a conceptual site plan to develop five senior living triplex cottages as a second phase of a full-service elderly home, elderly housing complex on the site. The existing complex on the site consists of independent living, assisted living, and memory care. It's located on Sashaba Road. Many of the planning commissioners may recall that the property was rezoned from OS two to R three elderly housing in two thousand nineteen, that same year, the elderly housing, the three-story seniors living facility was granted conceptual site plan and special land use. At that time, this phase was discussed in pre-application meetings, but it was never brought formally as part of any approval that, by the planning commission. Also want to note that the building that is now built was granted a variance for height. The attached single-family housing is a principal primitive use in the R three, and the planning commission may grant conceptual approval, conceptual approval with conditions, or disapproval, or ask for revisions.
Okay. Jason, most of your issues appear to be things that can be addressed in engineering. Is there anything in particular you'd like to discuss right now?
Two, two items. The first is the, the sanitary sewer that's being extended to feed these new units. It's been originally designed as a public utility extension. In conversations with the DPW, their recommendation and preference is for that to be a private lead, and by doing so, that may open up some flexibility for the applicant to revise the design to hopefully preserve a few more trees. Right now, it's going kind of along the top of the screen, along that northern property line, through some of the previously preserved trees from the original development, so. I guess good news, and something that they can explore further as they go forward to try to preserve that and look at other alternates. And then the other item that we kind of pointed out is what we're looking at now. You can see there's a steep slope that comes down to the rear of these units, and the, basically the proposed contouring or the grading goes right up to the edge of those patios, and then they're gonna have to have some swales or some drainage structures in there to pick that up. So, we are recommending that they look at alternates to expand that rear yard and to push some of that drainage a little bit further away from the units in those areas. And then, like you indicated, the rest of the items can really be addressed on the final construction drawings.
Okay, thank you. See, the applicant apparently has come to the podium.
Hi, I'm Todd Barry, I'm with Kirkco Construct, Kirkco Management, so, here to address any concerns.
Okay, anything in particular you want to say right now?
Uh, no, the, the one thing that was brought up to us with, earlier in the week, we, we do have one building that is drawn currently on, on the wrong setback line. We think we can adjust that to the south and work within the confines of the grading, so it's a minor issue, but I would, we wanted to just address that, and hopefully we can still-
Is that the one, one, two, three?
Yeah.
First one?
Yeah, so there will be a slight adjustment to move those towards the south, but that's working within the current plans of the site setbacks that are on the property, so.
And, just to summarize, in my opinion, you got a beautiful project, it was well done, and-
Thank you.
I think an asset to our community regarding the current request, it's, it's my opinion that major issues appear to be a couple of setbacks that aren't met, and the impacts of these new buildings on the heavy woodlands that provide an excellent screen for the single-family housing behind it, and, and which design, I think, was a major factor in you getting the approval for the third story, and I'm concerned the impact it will have. Those are, those are my major concerns, any commission members, other?
Yeah. You want to go? I was there, I approved this, I was, it was back in the day, I think you guys did an amazing job. It's probably one of the best developments we've had in the township in decades, where the trees were preserved, money was spent to retain things to save the preservation. This was one of our first projects where we had natural feature buffers around the perimeter instead of clear cutting and building berms and pine tree, you know, putting in trees, I mean, it really, you guys really did a good job on it, so I want to say that, because I don't say that to many.
And they did everything they said they were gonna do.
Yeah, and they did everything they said they were gonna do, so, you don't get too many attaboys from me, so, take that one. We, we appreciate you for that. I'm gonna have the same issue I had when, when I was on the planning commission back then, and we approved this, the residents behind us, my only concern with doing grading instead of retaining is that I'm concerned that the, that by doing that, there's just gonna be the tree stock, you know, the trunks that the, the residents see through, and the canopy's gonna be above their head, and, and as you take the trees down the slope, those canopies that step down to provide some cover are gonna be eliminated. So, I guess the only thing I would say is that, I, I, and the, and from being a builder my whole life, that kind of slope right up to the back of people's houses, it's, it's a little too close for my comfort zone. I would like to see the patios slope back, and then there be a grade, or maybe a low retaining wall that doesn't require perimeter fencing or safeguards, you know, from it, something to get that away from them. And then, when you do that type of mass grading on a slope like that, my only concern is that there's just not, it's gonna eliminate so much vegetation opposed to retaining to the point where the slope is lower, and then we could get a little bit less invasive into the forty-foot setback, so. Really, the lower ground cover below the canopy is what I'm, is what I, is what I'm concerned, that there's just gonna be this clear view through the trunks. The wash of light from the building's already there, because it's such a big building, and it's so big, so that's, that's an issue, and I agree with Bill that part of the design in the three-story was that we were, you know, that was gonna be less invasive to the residents up on the hill, because we brought the building up to their elevation, so, really, that's my- The grading on the back is, and the way that affects the, the buffering is really, other than that, and obviously, one's a little close to the property line. Thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, a little less grading, you are leaving some natural feature, natural buffer, which to me, I think bushes and thicket and brush is as effective or more effective than pine trees a lot of times, so I'm not for clearing in planting pines, it takes forever for them to fill in, it never works right, and they, you know, and then there's maintenance, so. If, if, and I think just maybe it could be addressed with a small retaining wall, not a crazy, crazy one, and that could adjust some of that.
That was brought to our attention.
But that's really, other than that, um-
And the reasoning, and just to give a little understanding, the, the current condition, and we, we invited the neighbors to meet with us at the building, their current condition i- is light from the existing building in primarily winter time, and they're welcome to create, but that is to, currently to this day, that's why we're looking at the row of pine trees as more of a buffer, as you can see in that sloped portion there, the, the pine trees being at the top of that hill, providing some protection to what you have in winter time versus the brush being down. You're, you're not gaining anything beneficial on the winter side things if you leave the current conditions. So, for us, it was more important to address the issue and to put those trees there. The other item that we're looking to amend on the issue, we're gonna connect that row of trees, so it'll be not, there won't be any gaps within those areas between like nine and ten and three and four. Those, those tree line would then be consistent all the way across to provide better dampering of the light from the existing building in the winter time, was, was the goal, objective goal.
Get some ground cover down low and sheltering, I get that. What would have to happen to the grade to, to the existing woodland now to put those pines in? Would, could they, is it masquerading to the property and then building in the pine tree berms, or is that what you're proposing?
To the setback line, not to the property line, yes.
Just to the forty-foot setback line?
Yeah.
And I guess, uh-
And the rea- if, if you look back, of the majority of where the homes are located, a lot of that is thin down in that area by our driveline. You get a lot more dense as you go up vertical. We're gonna look to keep as much as we can, but, yeah, you're, for those two areas in the back where you have the flat ones long, we're gonna end up going to that setback line. It's just the nature of the grading.
What is, on the property adjacent to you, at the top, you see that circle like a cul-de-sac? Is that what that is, that arc between the house on the left and the house in the middle? What is that denoting there?
The house on the-
That's the cul-de-sac, and that'd be-
What is this right here?
Water main.
That, yeah, that's the water main, that's not, that circle at the top is the cul-de-sac.
It's not something that's in that neighborhood currently, it's just denoting the water main coming through there?
That's the water main.
It's a cul-de-sac.
Top portion of that is the cul-de-sac, yeah.
Water main's already there, right?
Right.
It's coming in.
Relocating a portion of that to route around, between nine and ten, there's a piece that we have to relocate around to reconnect that.
And when this came back for final site plan, what we would do, again, is have our landscape architect look at it, looking at the species, the grading, and whatnot, to make sure that, number one, that the trees that are proposed, the species and where they're at, would survive, and then, number two, that where the tree protection is shown is accurate.
Can I ask a question of the people in the audience? Are you here supporting or opposing? He brought you, so.
Okay, with that, with that, I'll open it up to comments from the public. Thank you for doing that.
See what he had to say.
My name's Don Coats, I live at five seven one three Fenwick, which is through that, that dotted line right there. That's, I don't, I'm not sure what that is, and that was one of my questions.
That's soil types.
Because that's just going right through my pool, and I didn't know what that was. And then, there was a, something about rerouting, which I didn't understand, but I just want to say, first off, that Kirkco did invite us, I think it was in December, to go through the plans, and we really appreciate that, and when we went through this original project, they were the same, willing to listen and, and do what we asked them to do in some manner. I love the idea of the retaining wall, because that is a very steep area there, and we hadn't, I hadn't thought of that. I think my house and the one to the north, which is Joe Graff here- I think my house and the one to the north, which is Joe Graff here, I think we're the most affected by the closeness of that grade right there. So one of the terms that we used here was, this is the second phase? And I was, one of my questions is, does that mean there's a phase three, phase four, phase five, or is this it? So I don't know if, I'll just continue, I guess.
Currently, this is what we're, this is the only phase we're looking at on our property at this point. Yeah, anything else, we'd have to purchase land or.
Okay.
Brannix, other properties which.
Okay.
We currently don't want plans like that. But for this body of property, this is the living.
Okay. Okay, so after our meetings, we asked some questions and I feel that they responded to our questions very, in a very satisfactory manner. But I just wanted to get them on the record. What, my question was, what land was, will be untouched? And the forty-foot setback, I was told in writing, is will be untouched and then the grading will go after that. And the, the pine trees that are proposed would be on the Kirkco's side of the forty-foot setback line. So not closer to our house, closer to them. And then in that forty-foot line or, or after that, how do I describe this? On the Kirkco side of the forty-foot line, I asked would all the trees be removed, basically wiped out? And their intention was to keep the natural look and keep as many trees as they could, which I appreciate. Another question I had was, these are one-story apartments or condos. Could the first floor be at the same level as the current facility? Obviously, for us, the lower the better. My understanding is that we would probably see the roof of, of these buildings. And if that's the case, that'd probably be best for us. So Todd actually responded, said, "It'll be first floor level relatively," which I know is fairly close. One comment, and we talked about the water main. When this project started, there was, that water main was not, was just there. And when we did this addition, they tapped into it. Ever since then, I've noticed our water pressure has dropped. And I spoke to, when we had our meeting with Kirkco, they recommended I talk to David McKee. And he was very responsive and very open. And we came up with some ideas that we wanna implement. But I just wanted to bring it up to everybody's attention that when the sprinklers go on, you know, it's six in the morning and you're in the shower, you definitely have a drop in the water pressure. So David McKee said, "Let's get some data, et cetera, et cetera." He wanted to put a chart, you know, on the, but you can't do it in the winter. I offered to put one in my house, he said, "We're going to that system." So I'll work with David on the side, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Let's see. And then the big thing is the light pollution. We know it's tough and obviously in the fall, it's, it's not a, it's not an issue. But when the leaves drop, it is, it's a fairly big issue. And then when there's a nice snowfall and everything's white, it's even more of an issue with the reflectivity. So it's a big issue to us and we appreciate your consideration on that. Todd's and Kirkco's response was, they thought that the pine trees that they're recommending would have a good positive impact to that. I think that's. Yeah, and we did talk about the, the additional trees to protect the corners that were kinda left open. But I guess that's what I had. I really like the idea of a retaining wall to protect that slope area. I think that's something we didn't talk about. I appreciate you bringing that up, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
I'll be quick. Alan Julian, I'm at fifty-seven seventeen Fenwick, live next door to Don. Would just reiterate, Kirkco's been great. After hearing all the clear view stories, we're like, thank God we didn't go there. So you guys have been wonderful to work with. I would just say with respect to the area behind the patios and trying to preserve as much of the natural trees that are there as possible, if you were sitting upstairs in our house right now, a pine tree that's six or seven or eight feet off the ground isn't gonna do anything to disrupt the light pollution that we get from the second and third floors of the existing building. And it isn't so much individual residences within the building, it's every corridor has a nice big window at the end of it with no drapes or anything. So all that light just comes out. And it's, it's, we joyfully get it about, it's not like Christmas vacation, you know, and when the next door neighbor's lights come on. But, but it's not fun either to have to shut your shades at night just to keep the light out of your house. So I think they're trying to be very reasonable, we're trying to be very reasonable. But to the extent that even a small retaining wall could save having to scale up back further into that, into that slope behind, in our case, well, units one, two, and three, give me some more of those sixty, seventy-foot tall trees. Because even when there's no leaves on them, there's enough branches that it helps. And an eight-foot pine tree isn't gonna do anything. So anyway, it's my two cents. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
My name's Joe Graff, I'm at fifty-seven oh nine Fenwick, I'm the house directly north of the development. I, I too want to compliment Kirkco for the construction of the phase one. I think it's a wonderful facility and they were true to all the promises they made us during that, that discussion, with one exception. When we were going through this process with phase one, we all objected to or we, we spoke against these small buildings being built behind the main building. And the main reason was because of the infringement that was gonna be on our backyards. The, we were gonna lose like two-thirds of the tree cover that kept our, separated from the main building, et cetera. And I thought at that time, and I wonder if, if your records reflect that, that I remember Kirkco saying, "Okay, we're taking these buildings out of the plan." I meant that to be, it was done, it was the end of discussion. Now all of a sudden, two years later, they come back and say, "Oh, we wanna do phase two now." What phase two was that? And so I'm not, I'm very complimentary of what they've done so far and how they've treated us and how they've worked with us. But I feel betrayed by that, that the fact that we, we thought this was not gonna come about. Now it is gonna come about. And the way it lays out, as it's been discussed here already, is that when they do that cutback slope, it's coming within forty feet or at forty feet of our backyard. And, you know, Don's got a pool and I've got a nice patio. And all of a sudden, the ground is gonna drop off. All the trees that are currently sitting on that slope area are gonna be gone. And the, and the replacement by those little pine trees are gonna do nothing. And the other thing is, the drawing that they show where they show a person standing on my backyard with an arrow that shows what we see or don't see, we actually live like three feet higher than that point in the ground. So when we're looking out of our kit, our windows, we're above the elevation of that person standing on the ground, which makes, and then of course, the second floor is even, even more. So I, I know that we can't control everything, but, but I do really feel betrayed by this whole subject coming up again. And if it's gonna be the way it is, then I would hope that we could really make substantive changes, like maybe you're suggesting, Sam, where we can maybe not have the, the slope start forty feet from our property? Or do some other mitigation where there's a more substantive protection of the, you know, the visual pollution that we've got as well as the reshaping of the land that takes out most of the tree protection we have between the properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, hi, I'm Cindy Julian, I'm at, okay, I'm actually gonna ask Don for something because of pictures as a thousand words. I'm Cindy Julian and I'm at fifty-seven seventeen Fenwick. Alan's my husband, we spoke earlier. I would just like you guys to, I don't believe, when we were at another meeting, it wasn't with the planning commission, correct?
I was out of town.
You were out of town, okay. Do you remember, they didn't get a chance to see the pictures, these guys? I mean, you just showed them, but. Do you mind if I come forward? Because when you look out now and, and in the wintertime, since we've had snow since Christmas, I mean, this is what we see. It's, it's just weird to be in the back of your house and it's light. And they, you know, they did this type of architecture up north. I forget the term of the architecture, but anyway. You have, that's right. You have these huge windows and it's, they're beautiful, but they're lit all night because it's an assisted living facility. So across the back, for security or for safety, everything's lit. Even though they did do a, you know, lot with the lighting through the parking lot and the roadway for all the lights to shine downward. It's, you know, it's miniscule. And like Joe was saying, if you stand in our yard, we're gonna see through these houses or over the tops and that's what we see. So it's this light pollution. And then to remove the trees, and as Alan was saying, an eight-foot, eight-foot pine, it's not, I mean, maybe in twenty years, but maybe not. I don't know how well they'll do that there. But anyway, I just wanted you to see how bright it is and how weird. I mean, it's, it's really odd to have that much lighting at night. And that's why we're all here, because it's, it's striking. And I, so I just wanted you to take a look at this.
Thank you.
Say your windows look very clean when I look through it.
That's terrible. You gotta clean them all the time.
I, I will say that, been on the planning commission a year, so I was not here when this originally approved. But I don't remember if I saw it written or through conversation, it was clearly represented the way you said that they withdrew these from the original application. And, and I share your concern with that. Anybody else in the audience? Your cohort back there said something, so for the record, could you give us his name?
David Andrews.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
So it sounds like it's the corridor windows that are throwing the most amount of light, is that what it is?
It seems like they're, I don't know about from where you live, but from where we live, you know, they're beautiful windows, but they're, and, and I guess there's some downstairs, there's doors downstairs and a big entrance downstairs. So there's doors that, and those corridors have to be lit, and I understand that.
But is there something that can be done to stop the, you know, they have to be lit in the corridor, not out of the, not outside of the corridor?
Safety wise, we can't turn them off.
Not turn them off, but is there.
Can we deal with shades or something, yeah, so we can look definitely under that.
You know, tent the window so that the light stays in instead of shines, I miss, you know. And so a couple, trying to work the bugs out of this, you know, a couple things, if that was something that could be done, maybe some of the wall packs could be converted to more, you know, modest downlighting if, you know, possibly would be, you know, something. My other question is, since you're, from the forty feet to the property line, what's there, just hardwood trees?
It's just deciduous, hardwood trees, yeah.
Oh, deciduous trees up there right now?
Yeah.
I mean, does it make sense to impact the forty-foot to put in pine trees at the higher elevation?
Well, we were looking at just at the forty-foot line doing it, not into the forty-foot line.
I understand, I'm just, I'm not well versed with your view. I'm just asking if the, you know, if the forty-foot line now is here from your, you know, as it's descending, does it make, is, would it even make a difference? See, I don't see the, the adding of these buildings isn't going to change, isn't going to probably add a lot more light pollution 'cause it's so low from you. The big building certainly does, but the removal of the trees does. So I'm just trying to figure out a balance of, you're looking over the roofs of these houses, so it's, it's not as much the building, it's more the site work to put in the building, you know, that's doing it, is what I'm trying to figure out.
Lights in the back of each of those.
Well, those, but that would just be a regular one-bob carriage light on a porch, like any other house would be in a neighborhood behind you. So I wouldn't consider that, that's not like safety lighting and ambulance light, you know, I mean, it would just be a carriage house light, you know. But I'm just trying to see if moving the pine trees with that, up the hill more with that help?
That's why we were purposely putting them at the very peak of that hill. That was within the setback, so we weren't going more than the setback and removing additional trees to do that, yeah. That we were gonna put them at the line of the forty-foot setback.
And, and my take on this is, to be honest, is I, I, I thought this was gonna come back as a phase two from when I saw it the first time. I, I, I don't remember the discussion of it being deleted and I certainly have been, could be wrong. I just, I, I don't remember that part of it. It just was something I thought was gonna come down the road later. It wasn't, I think it was different buildings though, they were.
I was gonna say the size of the buildings are, these are a lot bigger.
They were single little cottages, not three units, I think, when it first was proposed, you know.
I could just interject on that point. I was the guy here presenting the, the first phase. And we, as part of the pre-application meeting, contemplated cottages, but we never included that in our application. And Brian, correct me if.
No, that's true, I mean.
So there was never, we never applied for that.
Yeah, the initial plan had the cottages and, and it was recommended to them that they just take it off 'cause it was gonna add too much confusion and they weren't ready to build them yet.
For the phase one.
Yeah. And I think we'd be willing, I mean, we're about what's a solution for everybody here, not trying to sell anybody on anything. But I just feel like the retaining walls aren't gonna provide a decent solution with deciduous trees. I'm wondering if window treatments might provide a better solution because it, it seems like it's the corridor windows that, we're governed by an I-2 standard, which is, that's assisted living and memory care back there. But I'm wondering if we could cut some of the light with some window treatments to make it more palatable and accomplish more.
Sounds like it's a lighting problem more than anything.
Yeah.
Because even planting trees, not cutting down trees, not touching the site, it's unacceptable to them. So, you know, that doing nothing still is a problem for you.
We were kind of all really surprised when, you know, when the light was so bright. We really did not expect it.
I, I just look at that as a separate issue from the project. We have a lighting, we have a light washing issue that's an issue, not as much. Even with all the trees there and the slope not being created, it's, it's still got way too much light, so.
It's like one of our criterias too, the light's not supposed to bleed out.
You're not supposed to, the light's not supposed to leave the property. And that's of course, you know, fictional.
Unfortunately, it's just, you look at the distance and you see light. I mean, I, I agree with them. But it's not really shining on anything, it's just, so I'm wondering if maybe a combination of, you know, looking at the lamping of the light fixtures in the corridor and a combination of window treatments might accomplish more and be a better solution for the residents. and be a better solution for the residents than retaining walls, candidly.
The retaining wall idea was to prevent the steep, the slope from being too close to the patio for those people, you know.
Their people, yeah.
Right. We, we want to accomplish that.
You know, but it wasn't gonna solve this problem, the picture.
We're committed, and trust me, our ownership to saving every tree on that site. And I mean, we have our landscape architect and civil engineer here also. We've had arborists in there, we've treated existing trees even when they've been impacted. So we are very committed to keeping as many trees as possible. But I'd just like to suggest a solution that works for everybody and actually accomplishes a solution.
Ron, you got a question?
Ron?
Well, I guess, I just wanted to talk about the layout. I guess what I remember from years ago too is when the cottages were on there, it seemed like they were more on the south side. You know, like now we've got everything all, you know, cranked all the way to the north side. You know, like units one, two, three there. To me that, you know, it's too close to the property line already. But to me, between those first three units there, you know, one of those needed to be eliminated if you're gonna have those there to spread them out or make them all duplexes instead of, you know, tri-units. You know, more space between them where you could put more vegetation in there as well, so. But, you know, why can't they be moved around to the south here? You know, like you got unit fifteen, how come we couldn't go to the right of that?
There's a considerable slope on that south side.
A considerable slope where you're trying to put these, so.
Brian?
Yeah.
When they first came to a pre-planning meeting, I think, weren't they coming around more to the south and wasn't there an issue that the, the, the property line takes a little dip to the north and therefore there's not as much room there and stuff like that?
Yeah, they couldn't really keep pushing it towards, you know, Sashaba anymore than basically that because of the grade.
Did they, did they eliminate a building with that, with the?
I don't think so, no. But I know we suggested that they try to move them that way and it just wasn't gonna work grade-wise.
I mean, it seems like it's a light, it's a lighting issue, which isn't really part of what you're asking us to approve. You've got an existing lighting, light pollution problem that needs to be resolved.
Get those new windows with the electronic diffuser or whatever.
I guess what I would suggest, I mean, this is a preliminary approval request. If we get our engineers involved, we certainly have some here to answer any questions, but I think getting our lighting engineer, electrical engineer involved to look at the photometrics back there might provide an improvement. And then I think we look at some window treatments. I, I think that would, you know, and work as we have to come up with the right solution. I, I don't claim to have the answer as, as we stand here, but.
We, let me ask you about the two setback requirements. Can you meet those or are you gonna ask for variances?
We're gonna work with them.
We can meet them with our.
I'm not opposed to, you know, the conceptual site plan approval. That, I don't, you know, I think that we gotta work, we gotta, we gotta figure out this light pollution problem before we get to the final and agree to take down any more trees, would be my, my consensus, that it's a, it's, it's an existing problem even before the trees are cut down, you know, so we gotta figure out how to fix that. It would be my, I don't wanna exaggerate it by doing the big slope and taking down more, more trees, even if it's just stalks, you know what I mean? That's why I was trying to get trees higher up or somehow bigger or just address the wash of that light, because it sounds like it's interior lighting that you need, not exterior. We're asking to eliminate your exterior safety lighting and those can be addressed by light packs that don't wash out to the, there's something shooting that way clearly by those photographs.
We actually were sensitive to that in our lighting design. We put four-foot bollards around the pathways back there. I think, I think you're right. It's the, it's the corridors as I understand it, it's not like there's.
I think the doorways as well. So the one, you know, there's the, there's a big central doorway, which, you know, is needed for the residents coming in and out. And then you have on the north end, another doorway. So there's the lights coming through those. Any, any of the rooms probably, I haven't really paid that much attention, but have, people probably draw their dreams. But in your common areas, any doors or windows there?
I'm pretty confident we could work through the common areas. The main entrance might be a little more challenging.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, but we could work with you on that, maybe tinning.
Yeah, the main entrance, it's, it's at a low point. And that main entrance is below the porch. I think what you are seeing is probably the window right next to it by the fireplace.
Oh, yeah, so, yes.
Which we can do that one easily, that one.
And I'll be candid with you.
A lot of you.
We were driven to create as much natural light as many windows as possible. So it, it's, but I think these things, I, I agree, it's kind of a separate problem, but I think we're willing to work through it and figure out a solution that's good for everybody.
So.
Can I make one more statement?
Open it up to the public or?
We redid it. Yes, go ahead.
I just wanna restate, yeah, the lighting is a major problem, don't disagree. But there are two problems and we're trying to convey that. You know, the, the, the top of the slope that is going to be created is basically from me, you, from my backyard. Right now, the, the, the land is graded three, three times far in the back and it's all trees. So to cut down two-thirds of the trees behind you and leave a few trees between you and me and the top of the slope where you are, to me is a major change in our environment. And I can't help but believe that no matter, I mean, I think what, what the suggestions have made about the lighting are good ones and may produce wonderful results. But doing the reshaping of the ground and adding those buildings is gonna then add more to that issue, even if the one we're talking about now is, is, is resolved. So I just, I don't know if anybody else agrees, but I, I just feel like that, I would hope that you won't take that lightly, that if we solve the light problem, everything's golden. Because at least I don't think it is. And I would hope maybe Perkell can work with us to, I don't know if there's any, any changes that can be made of substance, but if there is, we'd love to talk about it.
I think we've got a lot of comments.
Would you be willing to do a tree survey on that section there? And, and indicate which ones would be coming down with the proposed changes?
I'll throw it up.
Does the commission think that would be helpful?
We actually already, yeah, but.
I mean, it, candidly, it's a lot of brush also.
Down where we're at and where the removal is, yes. It's easier to see if you're walking it and I do that. I don't, I disagree that it, it, it looks a lot like your, but I, I think when you see what we're removing, because I've, I've walked back there many times and my, my owner has tasked me to even look at retaining walls, potential for saving single trees. And I just look at it and I'm, there's nothing that would benefit, in my opinion, based on where the current spots are designated. So I'm happy to walk it, I'm happy to look into it if we wanna collectively look at that, but we can definitely do a tree survey and present that to you as well, so.
I'm guessing there's some buckthorn in there too. I'm guessing there's some buckthorn.
Buck what?
Buckthorn brush in there.
Oh, buckthorn brush, yeah, yes.
Which is an invasive, so, I mean, it kills the mature trees.
Oh, yeah. There is, yes, there is.
So, all right, for the commission, I think we're at a point here where we, we, we have two choices. Either we postpone or we approve conceptual site plan. I think the conditions of either, it would be to postpone and allow them to work with it to meet the setbacks, to address the existing light and address the slope and retaining wall and provide a tree survey, or we could approve the conceptual with the same conditions. Whatever your flavor is.
I think the last one.
Approve conceptual.
No, I made the last motion.
Oh, oh, you made it. I thought you said you.
And it was a doozy.
Okay.
The warm out for a night.
I made the first one, so somebody else is first.
What do we wanna do?
My motion.
To do?
I'm, I'm in agreement for approving a conceptual, but with.
With the conditions.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the conceptual site plan with the conditions that have already been stated, which I can't remember them all.
I'll, I'll state them for you.
Yes.
Sure.
That they meet the setbacks, they address the existing lighting conditions, they address the slope and retaining wall issue and provide a tree survey available.
With, with the intent that, yeah, the survey's gonna lead to something, maybe.
A better understanding of what's staying and remaining.
Yeah, right.
Is that good?
And guiding, guiding the next, yeah, guiding the landscape plan.
Which may equal elimination of units if needed, so.
Yeah.
It's just conceptual, so.
Right.
And thicker buffering along the setback line, which they already said they were gonna do as fill in some of the voids.
Yeah, that's, that's my hope is, even if it's multiple layers, that's kinda what we're thinking.
Add it.
Yeah.
I still think the unit one, two, three needs to be eliminated, so.
Are you just saying that's a possibility or are you wanting that part of the?
I, I just think there's too many units and they, they, you know, my recollection, they were more all to the south before. You know, we're like, now we're approaching way to the, to the northwest than from,
okay.
What, you know, what was even thought of years ago, so.
Megan?
I just will point out that the number of units proposed meets the density that's allowed on the site overall.
And there's a need. I don't have as much issue with the proximity if it's adjacent to the steel company over there opposed to a residential home, because that zoning's different. But it needs to stay out of the natural feature buffer that we've got, that they created for that property. That's, that's, that's my biggest concern.
You know, I guess that's what I'm gonna, to me, it's just cutting down the vegetation between that and the wing gate subdivision, so. I mean, that was the whole purpose in, you know, trying to keep as much buffer there in the first place, so. I'm not worried about the, the unit to the north or to the south because, you know, neither one of those are residential units. I guess you could, on the south, I guess you could say Mr. State Farm is a residential house, but it, you know, to me, it's a commercial building, so.
All right, so just to summarize the conditions that Mr. Suter has added. That they meet the setbacks, that they address the existing lighting, that they address the slope and retaining wall, then they provide a tree survey that will indicate which trees are staying or which are remaining and will be a major factor in consideration of other landscaping and et cetera.
Do you wanna put a caliper on there of size of tree?
Six inches?
Six inch.
Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
No reason to burden them with saplings.
And did you say something about the lighting?
Yes, I did.
That it's addressed, okay. I said it.
And wait, this is relating to PC file two oh two four zero one one.
Oh, yeah, that's.
I don't know that we've mentioned that.
Yeah, Joey, you gotta put that in.
I'm sorry, I left that out.
Okay.
Okay, I, I think we can do a, a all in favor. I.
Aye.
Applause. Motion's ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is.
Make a motion.
PC file two oh oh two five dash oh oh one, zoning ordinance text amendment relating to section E posting of signage. Mr. Carlisle has, and Ms. Megan have, put forth a proposed amendment that will require the posting of a sign on the property when anybody is requesting any form of a rezoning. And hopefully you all read this. It's a fairly simple thing, I don't think we have to have a lot of discussion on it. I think it speaks for itself. Megan, I don't think you need to elaborate on this, do you?
No, just your next step, if you agree with these amendments, is to call a public hearing.
Okay. I have a few comments on it, but I'll give everybody else an opportunity to speak first. Joe?
Yes.
Yes, oh.
I just wondered if we were, are we gonna, is there gonna be a fee to, we're gonna, it's gonna come out of the escrow of the petitioner asking for it to cover the, the, we're gonna own the signs and have them made, but.
Yeah, we're gonna have them made.
Shouldn't, shouldn't that mention a fee? I, I know it's a different ordinance, but shouldn't we mention in here that there'll be a fee?
I think we'll, we'll probably pull it, we'll have to think about the fee a little bit more. We'll figure that out by the time we get, get it to the board.
Are these, Brian, are these gonna be reusable signs or just something we, okay?
Yeah, I mean, as much as we'd love to have them very specific, it's gonna be simplest just to have generic ones that we can put out.
Yeah.
You know, that, and reuse.
So.
Can you put like a QR code or something on there or whatever?
Yeah.
Where you go, go to the website.
Direct it to the website.
Yeah, we can do that, that's.
So it won't have the date of the hearing or it's being zoned from, rezoned from office to commercial?
Correct.
It won't have that?
No, they just say rezoning proposed or.
And then you'll have.
For information.
It's very similar to how Orient Township does, very similar signs.
Put like a QR code, takes you to the.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, we could do that, because that would be consistent, right? Wouldn't a QR code take you to the page or something?
How do you, how do you put a, so you have to change the QR code every time?
No, we just set it, we wouldn't set it to the specific packet, you just probably go to the agendas minutes, you know, to the packet site, so it pulls up the packet. You know, kinda like the link that I provide you, when you click on it, it goes right.
Take, takes you to the general area.
Yeah, the general area.
Pick your specific one, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or agendas.
So the QR code would be reused for different projects then?
No, I just, it would be the same QR code to just hit the agendas or something like that, or the Planning Commission's section.
Take you where the information.
True, the website.
Pick the one you want.
It'll take you to the agenda packet location. It won't take you to the packet for their specific request.
Correct, yes, correct.
They'll have to find that.
Makes sense.
Okay.
There's no illumination guidelines, right? These aren't illuminated or anything?
They're not gonna be, no. I don't know what material yet, we gotta talk to a sign company and sort that out. So there's a little bit of implementation, we have to sort out the details, but.
First the fees or whatever go, just one of the bullet point could be, you know, any costs associated with this, you know, as part of, you know, it's paid by the applicant or whatever.
Yeah, because we have to cover the staff time to go put it out.
I'm just saying, it could just be a generic thing that, you know, whatever fees there are, are, you know, your, their responsibility, so.
Or would, or would you say the fee as spelled out in whatever section the ordinance spells that out?
That doesn't need to be in here, I think those are logistical details that you can work out once it's approved.
Correct.
Do we make a motion?
I just don't want some board member saying, what's this gonna cost us? And if it says a fee right here.
Then I think after the public hearing and then if you're gonna recommend this, you could direct staff and consultants to include the costs for the ordinance, the operation of the ordinance change in any cover memo that goes, in the cover memo that goes to the board.
I mean, over time, this will become a revenue generator. You pay, pay it off after a while and you just keep charging the same fees or they go up percentage every year.
Well, we, we, yeah, in time, we'll pay off the cost of the signs, sure.
Still get the labor, put them out there.
Yeah, that's the thing, is I, I'll figure out the fee. Yeah, that's the thing, is I, I'll figure out the fee based on the labor and the time and all of that, so.
Can we penalize an applicant if they're not the ones responsible for posting it?
Staff's gonna put it out.
I think he said staff was gonna post it.
Yeah, I thought staff was gonna put it out.
Yeah, so how can we penalize, like, if we fail to put it out, it's our fault. How can we penalize an applicant?
That's true.
It's be somebody that didn't apply or something like that.
Well, and item seven on page three just says, failure to comply with this provision in section shall not constitute grounds for invalidating the application, but shall require adjourned and rescheduling the public hearing. Well, maybe we strike at the cost of the applicant.
Yeah.
Because then it would be.
It's our fault, not, not their fault, yeah.
Well, it's still a penalty to them if they're, if that delay causes them, it's our fault. I mean, I agree with the concept, I'm.
Don't like the wording.
I don't, it just seems.
Well, maybe item seven just says, should a sign be removed by inclement weather conditions by persons other than the applicant or for reasons beyond control of the applicant or the township?
Okay.
The applicant.
Weather knocks the sign over.
Yeah.
Air driver.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? Uh, we don't need a motion to set a public hearing, do we?
No, no.
We just do it.
We'll do it next month.
Okay. Uh, next item, master plan update. Megan, I understand you have some news for him.
Um.
Not a lot, but some news.
No, well, we were directed by the township to make all the changes that you had requested. Revised copy of the master plan sent to Mr. Opman Friday?
Yep.
Friday. Um, and so when you have a work session, I believe, at the end of this month, that could be on your agenda.
Oh, twenty seventh?
Yeah, that or next month. We'll just put it on first next month so we can move it forward.
Cool.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on here. Item four, future land use versus zoning maps, um, thing, thing I put together. Everybody got it, I assume, had a chance to study it?
Oh, I said, I read it.
I know it's late, and my intent here tonight.
You can use this one.
Thanks. My intent tonight was basically to figure out what the next step is. We don't need to spend a lot, I'm not, I'm not anticipating that we spend a lot of time on this tonight. I guess, just to get right to it, my thought was, you know, when you look at, when you look at the northwest area, there's, I think it's fairly easy to figure out which ones we address and which ones we don't. The difficult ones get in the Dixie Highway corridor, and there's a lot of areas along there. And, you know, I, I, I think in Washington Township, we initiated rezoning on one piece of vacant property, so I don't have a lot of experience in this, and I don't know what kind of a ruckus it creates when you're doing it, when there's existing operating businesses there. Do we, are we asking for a lot of trouble if we initiate rezonings on businesses that are already operating? Do we need to go and identify each business and see if it falls in the district we wanna rezone it to? Do we need to do that? And if we need to do that, maybe we can start that process and figure out how to do that. You understand my question?
I think I do.
Good, 'cause I don't.
I think we have to identify uses first, you know, on those parcels that.
Brian did it to my building, recommended rezoning. I was operating a business that was owned office service, but it was actually, had been retail since the nineteen fifties, so he said you should rezone it to match what you're doing. So I did, you know? My whole point of this exercise, which is what I, you know, me and Bill have talked a lot about, is pushing, is the defencing, to, us to be able to defend the zoning. And we had a petitioner come in, you know, that we, the planning commission approved, the township board denied. It would have been much easier had that parcel been rezoned correctly in the beginning. And I'm worried that if we don't identify these defendable parcels, especially in the northern corridor of Dixie, because that's the most rural part of Dixie, and it's an entranceway to the community, then we're gonna have.
And it's undeveloped.
Right, that we're gonna have a harder time developing, you know, defending it. So, and, and, and it's been, Ron's been on many master plans, I've been on many master plans. These properties in the township have been designated differently than they have been underlying zoned. We've done it over and over and over. It's time to align them so that there's no gray area. And people aren't coming back saying, well, it's zoned this. Well, twenty years ago when I started, they were zoned wrong, but we had identified them as what they should be. And we just never got around to doing this housekeeping of getting them aligned. And as far as I know from Bill's say, that the, you know, the state recommends, requires, whatever the word is, that our underlying zoning is aligned with the master plan as much as possible. It seems like a logical statement.
Yes.
And we just haven't done it, and I'm, think that.
It's like housekeeping.
I think it's time that we do it. We've talked about that. There's a bunch of housekeeping that we need to do, and I think this is one of them.
So do we, do we figure out all of the ones we wanna address, or do we figure out the most vul, call them vulnerable ones first? And address those?
I think you start with vacant land, most vulnerable, most non-conforming, and we start with, you know, two or three of those, or four or five of those, you know?
Ideally, you would look at those in concentrated areas. So you've been talking about a specific section of Dixie Highway right now, where there's multiple vacant properties there, including ones that you know that, that the county owns and may be for sale or whatnot. So you know that there's an anticipated change there, it's mobile. You would look, I would recommend is to look at a certain segment of that area in general, see where it complies between master plan and zoning ordinance. And then to bring those in, and then to do that one, and then to go down the list by vulnerability. But to also look at it more broadly as specific areas of a corridor, rather than just this one property.
Right.
Um, so that you're, you're looking at it in its whole. The other thing that we need to look at, and I think I mentioned this to you, Mr. Chair, is that sometimes some of the properties, not necessarily the section of Dixie that we're talking about, but maybe other parts of Dixie Highway or Sashville Road, is that the, the zoning is that specific thing because of the lot sizes, and they may not match. And so there might be, just need to be a little analysis there as to whether you're creating non-conformities or not by changing the zoning, in terms of lot sizes and lot size.
You know, we're in the middle of the DDA, you know, we got a DDA going, in the middle of revitalizing Dixie. I think Dixie's, the Dixie corridor is the place to start. I think that we should look at the vacant parcels, our goals and objectives of what that's gonna turn into, and the properties that are abandoned and ready for redevelopment. If any of those, you know, we should at least look at them to see if that would, you know, there could be something there that could encourage redevelopment, be more compatible with surrounding properties as they are currently developed. 'Cause that's what happened with mine. I was, you know, mine was an old office, but it was a retail center since before I was born, you know, so it's.
Okay.
Uh, you know, so those are things that, and it plays into, you know, the, you know, what we're trying to do revitalizing Dixie. So I, you know, and we're getting ready to make our decisions of where to invest all this tax, this tax money that we're capturing. So it would, uh, you know, I think if we're gonna pick a spot, I would suggest that we pick Dixie Highway and go after those two types of properties, abandoned and.
And let's call it non-operational.
Okay, question.
It's a nice way.
Question.
Well, abandoned is.
Blighted or something, yeah.
So, does the township have the right to rezone somebody's land?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, under state law, the township can. It's, townships very, do not very often take that power. More often than not, when they're rezoning a lot of property, it's that they revised their zoning ordinance and created new zoning districts or, and then.
That could affect the value. I'm just, I'm just seeing some owners is not liking that.
Well, we, we did a major rezoning down on Rockcroft and Dixie, where a lot of single-family homes rezoned commercial. Some commercial was zoned residential, and so we kinda cleaned all that up. Obviously, across the street, when the Walmart proposal was in front of us, did a township initiated rezoning there. And I think the old Gibson property, I think we did one there, they agreed to something.
Sure, vacant land on Deer Lake there.
Yeah.
Can you, uh.
So those are the three that I know of.
So what, what does it take to rezone? Is it a year-long worth of fifty different things that we have to do, or is it, is it quick? Or, I, I don't know. Like, what, what are we looking at here?
So for any rezoning petition, whether it's initiated by the property owner or the township, all it's required is that an application is filed, it describes what the change is.
Or the applicant.
Mm-hmm. And then a public hearing here, and then.
Goes to the board?
Goes to the township board.
Two readings.
Same process.
For two readings, same, same process.
This should be.
Now, that's what's required by state law.
Straightforward.
Because the township would be affecting property values, what people can do with their property, things like that. Usually, if it's a township-initiated rezoning, they, you'll go through a bit more process in terms of, you might look at the pros and cons of it, you might engage the property owners and say, what would be beneficial to you, what would be helpful for you? Often, they might have a underutilized property or something where it was built for retail use, zoned for retail use, but now I'm rezoned to industrial and I can't sell the building, or can't use the building, because they don't fit.
What if they say no? I mean, can they hire an attorney? I mean, can they fight?
They will hire an attorney.
Yeah.
But wouldn't this be easier for, Oakland County owns this old courthouse property, right? I mean, do we see any kind of pushback from them by trying to rezone what they're trying to sell? I mean, it seems like this would be low-hanging fruit, it'd be a quick win, hey, this is, we're moving forward with the plan, this is a great move, right?
There's a lot of parcels all along that area that haven't sold, and a lot of that can be because of what they're zoned currently.
Yeah.
So that's what people are looking at when they go to buy them. So if we wanna add more multifamily, if we wanna add multi-use, if we wanna add a mixture to make it more marketable and more profitable, doesn't mean that we're doing's negative to the landowner.
Right.
What it is doing is it's, it's, I think it protects us and gives us the defense to defend our goals and objectives of creating the corridor, with, to develop in the manner that the planning commission and the township board have adopted the master plan over and over and over, saying, here's where we wanna go, and we gotta get, we gotta get there.
I agree with a lot of them, but the fact is on Dixie, most of it, we're gonna be rezoning it from C three to C one, it's a down zone, which will, I, I, in my mind, make it less marketable, because it's less uses.
I don't know if I agree with that.
I think some of it, what you see even with like the McLaren property, people that are holding the property, they're waiting, you know, like the courthouse, if the courthouse was gonna go in there, hey, then this, my, my property, I can sell it, you know, for a certain, maybe betterment or whatever. You know, so people are holding on to the property, waiting to see what maybe the majority guy is gonna do first, you know, before they do anything, or just sell it off or, or build something that's not compatible.
I mean, we went through the whole exercise for years and years and years to develop the master plan, to come up with a plan, and in order to initiate the plan, the zoning should match the plan.
Agreed.
I mean, that's, what, otherwise what are we talking about?
Brian, do you think the board has a flavor to initiate some of these? I mean, we're gonna be talking a parcel here, a parcel here, a parcel here.
If, I mean, it's, it's a little easier procedurally to do it if you can have a grouping of parcels. You know, it's much easier, because then they're basically coming all together at once.
As a packet.
A onesy-twozzy thing is, may wear the board out, you know?
Do you have to have a separate public hearing for each parcel, if it's not contiguous?
No, it'd be all in one.
It'd be one, okay.
And then if there's ten or more that are contiguous that you're proposing to rezone, you do not have to notice by state law the people within three hundred feet of the public hearing. However, it would probably be a good thing to notify.
Yeah, that's, that's normal policy.
We're not trying to be secretive about it, but I think that we've been lax a days about doing it.
That's normal procedure.
As these parcels get developed, we're putting ourselves in harm's way of defending denials of things that go wrong.
So it, there's something to be said. It seems like it makes it easier if you can get a whole strip of Dixie that's zoned C three and, and rezone it to C one. But then, if you're talking operating businesses, the negative to that is you might get resistance.
Well, or they might become non-conforming.
Right. But why do you keep saying C one?
Well, most of Dixie is local commercial and.
I understand that, but you, we could rezone it to office service, which is what the master plan outlined some of the buildings.
Well, my.
It could be also multifamily.
If you look at what I did, I, I show the districts it's master planned for and what the zoning is. So if it, and most of it is zoned C three and it's, zoned C three and it's in a C one, local commercial. Most of it is. Yes, there are a few pieces that are in office and zoned something else, but.
The office service typically is what we put in as, as the, as between C one and residential. That's the transitional use, a doctor's office, a veterinary clinic, a lower, you're gonna have more of a one-story building, a shingled roof, you know, it's not gonna be a big commercial building.
But then, if we did that, then we'd have to go back and maybe readjust the master plan to that, too.
No, I think we already got the master plan in line with that.
So, may I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Um, we're gonna have work sessions?
No, not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
Subcommittee?
Or is some, what my.
You like them subcommittees.
Subcommittees are effective.
They are, if you can get it to get, get to move it along.
I really, but I feel like you need in order to look at, let's say, the specific section of Dex, of Dixie Highway is to look, I mean, Chair Scarborough has already done what the future land uses and what the zoning is. What hasn't been done is an analysis of looking at those zoning districts and the parcels, which ones are non-conforming for their, their current zoning, which ones are non-conforming for their proposed zoning, and then looking at them kind of in, as a whole, and which ones are underutilized or vacant, and looking them as a whole, and then you, I think you can make some more informed decisions on how you would move forward with that, that stretch of property.
Is there an automated way to do that, or is it a matter of actually going out visually inspecting each property?
Yeah, I mean, we pretty much know the uses along Dixie, so it's.
Yeah, it's, it's a mapping exercise, really.
Would it be just identifying eight to ten properties initially to see?
Well, is that on that tax parcel viewer?
Yeah, we can, we can drive it there.
That didn't help me at all, figuring out what the use was.
Yeah, the current use, current land use is based on what Oakland County, there's a whole tapestry of current land use, that's the data for that. Now, yeah, you don't know that it's a wineyards, it just, I think it just labels it as commercial property, you know?
Between Brian and my shop, we could put together a map and, like, an annotated map that would basically give you all of this information, and then I think you can make some decisions off of that.
Well, it's, I just say, let's get, let's get to it.
Well, that's, that's what I'm getting, that's what I'm trying to get to. What's it take to get there?
Put a subcommittee together and then picking it, put it on March agenda and get busy with it.
Well, Sam, my thought though is if, if we need to, we could divide Dixie Highway into sections, and each one of us could take a section and go drive down Dixie and write the address in the occupant. But if.
I, I will go take pictures of whatever portions you want, and I'll just mail them to you.
But if Brian and Megan think they can do it, and if you have the time.
I'm cheaper, I'll just do it for nothing.
We're using county data anyway.
Right now you're talking about a massive inventory of things. Let's get back to what we're focused on, vacant and non-used spaces. Let's, I think we should just start with. Let's, I think we should just start with that, not try to align all the businesses that are already operating, you know?
Put a diary.
Let's, I mean, I think that we should just focus on getting the master plan aligned and, and, and then also looking at properties that are ripe for reinvestment. You know, opposed to what you're talking about is a whole, that can be another thing, but it's two, you're making it so big that it's gonna slow us down.
It is a big job, and Sam, when you say get the master plan aligned, you're talking about.
But I'm not talking about every parcel, I'm talking about stuff that we're, we're trying to put protections in place, yes?
That whole strip there is, does not align.
Right. But if it's already all built, it's not a, it's, it's a this summer project, not a March project, is what I'm saying.
All right.
I'm not saying don't do it, and those are good goals, but no, we never get anything done.
Done.
I think we, I think that we should focus on the, tackle what we can handle, and then as soon as that's done, then we go to the occupied ones, you know, and it's a work in progress. If we try to do the whole township and sweep it through all the time, it, it'll be.
Why don't we start at the Red Barn and go however far, I mean, where it was, they proposed for that, that's vacant land.
Well, that's what we're talking about, and not just that parcel, but all the other ones along there.
The.
I would, I would recommend you identify a specific set of Dixie Highway.
I agree.
And then you start with that.
The whole section or look for, uh, essentially?
White Lake, White Lake to I seventy-five basically.
And look, look at every parcel that doesn't match, or look at abandoned and vacant.
Vacant land.
I think you should look at, I, I mean, I.
There's not many businesses, it's not gonna be hard to look at the rest of them.
No, I mean, I, what I think of as underutilized uses, like the old Curtis Kitchen Building, the, the theater, that's an underutilized property. I would look at those.
Auto truck parts place, I don't know what that zone, it's not a dog.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's just long zone commercial, it's like C two or something.
What do you mean by underutilized?
Well, that it's not its, its highest and best use. So take, uh, it's, um, yeah, it's, it, we're looking at, if we go from White Lake to seventy-five, that's a manageable.
Chunk.
You know, chunk of what, what is still generally vacant for the most part.
So basically page sixty-five.
It's the one that makes us the most vulnerable right now.
Yeah.
It's proximity to I seventy-five, yes.
If, if we don't want that to be a rest area like Sashaba turned into for travelers, we need to do this sooner than later. Before it turns into a bunch of fast food joints.
So if we do White Lake to seventy-five, if we just did an ownership map along Dixie Highway from White Lake to seventy-five and bring it back here, then could we say, okay, let, we know who owns what property, is this vacant, is it business, I mean, isn't that what we're looking for?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I think you need to know what, what's the current use.
Right.
Uh, cause there are some occupied buildings down along that corridor, and is, does that align with, is the zoning, first of all? And because some are so old that they've just been there, you know, kinda like Sam's building was, it's just always been that way. But you, you know, you gotta look at what it's currently used as, and what the future land use category is, and does it match the zoning? So it's, it's basically a, it's a simple chart.
Some we may not wanna, we may wanna just rezone them to match what their current successful use is, you know what I mean? And, and align them like they did with my building, doesn't mean we're doing something negative, but, uh, say the dog food store next to Racket Club is zoned office service, and it's been a retail dog food store for forty years, well, maybe we should look at that, you know, it doesn't change the use.
Are you guys willing to, I can cut this up into sections, and I can email each of you a section.
Sure.
And you guys go through, drive through, write down every address, the name of the business, and what the business is.
Give me the vacant land.
You, look at you, you got an idea.
We can do that, we don't have to drive there, we can do that on.
Who has a dog, you get the dog food.
Right.
Well, however you do it.
That's fine, let's do it, man.
All right, I'll, I'll email it to you, and we'll look at it depending on the top, next topic, um, either two weeks or in a month.
Brian, do we need to do something about having doing, having more meetings, or do we need to?
Wait, one more, stay on the agenda.
We'll talk, yeah, we'll talk about that at the end.
All right, so we're, we're okay, we know what we're doing on future land use, okay?
You're gonna email us, yes.
Okay. Uh, planning commission annual report, the zoning enabling act states that the planning commission is supposed to submit an annual report. From what I found out, it's rarely done, but we are required to do it, so I did it, and it's proposed in here. Uh, I did notice a few typos in my table of contents, the let numbering is incorrect, but I can fix that. Um, and there was one other somewhere else, I think, and, um, I want this to be a document that doesn't come from me, it comes from the planning commission. It's the planning commission annual report, it's not mine. So I want, I hope everybody had a chance to read this, and I want, uh, eventually, if not tonight, an approval to, um, send it to the board. For reporting it to the board, and we can discuss it in whatever detail, I'd be curious if people have, um, goals and objectives that I have missed, the last page, page ten. Um, if I've missed any major development projects on the horizon, um, and Brian, pursuant to our earlier conversation, you may want me to take some of those off if they haven't formally applied yet, but, so you let me know which ones to take.
I'll take a look at it, yeah, closer.
Um.
I thought on that short-term rental ordinance that they were supposed to get a permit to do that.
I did not include that or the milkweed because it's not, if I'm correct, I'm pretty sure I am, it's not part of the zoning ordinance.
Sorry. Milkweed specifically is not, it's in the general code.
As well as the long-term rental?
Yeah, rental ordinance is totally different.
Okay.
Did you check on that second reading on that?
The, the, uh.
Milkweed?
Yeah, I'll ask Paul where he's at with it.
Would you?
So.
We gotta read it one more time, and it's done. Love them on our photos, guys.
So please.
Well, also Trillium, I don't think that was approved, wasn't it approved subject to the rooftop review?
They haven't come back to the subcommittee for us to meet on that yet.
That was a follow-up item I was gonna ask them.
We're still reviewing construction plans, like engineering plans.
Shouldn't that say contingent?
It was approved, just with conditions.
Yeah, we're, we're reviewing engineering plans currently, so we're not at, even at that point.
I mean, but shouldn't you know with conditions?
Well, pretty much everything we approved has condition.
That the express car wash, that, that was the last meeting in December, I thought you guys denied that, it says no action taken.
Well, and technically, I think, you guys correct me, it was a PUD and a preliminary PUD review.
There is no.
There is no action taken.
Okay, so it's, it was.
They still could, if I'm right, I'm sorry, Ryan, if I'm right, they could come back.
They could.
Yeah.
Okay, so, no, actually taking really doesn't represent, it basically ended it, but.
I understand.
And the town center, to me, the, the town center car wash too says postponed, and that's the way I remember it. But, uh, when you go over there and you get your car washed, he's like doing all kinds of shit over there, he's got.
He's building up a whole bunch of stuff.
He's putting in like a thing where you could pay with your credit card, and he's already blocked, put a little island in there, so there's no bypass unit.
He's not a bypassing permit.
There is, uh, all, all kinds of spotlights that shine all the way across there and everything.
I mean, they had the parking lot all cut out and we're putting an interface structure and everything.
And he was doing that the, the week after, we denied it, so I'm sitting there going like, what the hell's going on here?
Well.
At first I thought, when I went in there, cause he had the cement all cut up, I thought, oh, he's just fixing the cement.
That's what I thought.
Then next time I went there, here's a little island in there, yeah.
There's a structure, there's actually a structure now, I think they moved the dumpster enclosure too.
They did, I know they did that.
But I'm just saying, he's, he's doing work and he hasn't even, uh, got to, and when I told him that night, I go, well, we should be afraid of you because, you know, you're not, you know, and he goes, oh, you don't need to be afraid of me, I'm here to help and you do whatever. I go, I says, I'm afraid of you because you don't know anything about our ordinances, you just wanna do whatever you wanna do.
Well, I took a picture or something and sent it to Dave Moran, uh, and, or no, David Key, and he jumped all over it.
Yeah, we had a, well, there was a issue with water being discharged.
Oh, yeah, they were pushing, yeah, they were, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was put to a halt.
You can do that, take, if you see something there, take a picture, forward it.
No, yeah, they had a hose and everything.
Uh, yeah, we were out there with, with, uh, DBW guys on that one.
I drove right over the hose as they washed my car, like what's that?
Shut the place down, actually.
Not a way to get us on board.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's like, he was all mad at us at night, and, you know, that, uh, we didn't approve his stuff, and it's like, you yelling at us when it's going out the door and everything, it's like, I go, dude, you're doing, you know, it's like, you just go do whatever you wanna do.
All right, let's get back to this annual report, I, um.
Mr. Chair, I'll take a very close look at this and just double check everything before this is ready for prime time to get, get to the, in front of the board.
All right.
How do you wanna do it, I mean, do you wanna send it back here?
Yeah, I'll, let me look at it and just, um.
Well, you can, you, can't you email me, copy everybody, as long as we don't discuss it?
Yeah, I mean, I can, yeah, there's.
And the same with you guys, if you have any.
Yeah, let me.
Just a minor.
I didn't know we had a budget.
Well.
Express car wash, it says express care wash.
We're gonna get to that.
Very.
Eight, oh, express, thank you.
Just a cycle.
Yeah, so everybody, please email me any additions, corrections, deletions, and, um, I, I'd hope to get this to the board in, in March. It's supposed to be an annual report, and I didn't wanna wait until September.
This is for twenty twenty-six, isn't it?
So, um, I don't, maybe somehow we can move this, uh, along without having to wait till February again, but.
When you say major development projects on the horizon, I mean, you got some crazy stuff on here that, uh.
Like what?
Like the gas station. Like that's a, like, I don't know, I mean, that, I, I guess what I'm saying is when you're, stuff it's, it's not formally on the horizon.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we should say anything unless it's been applied for.
And Brian will let me know.
That's what I was, yeah, that's what I meant, like, I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves.
Is the hotel, has that been formally applied for?
The Hyatt?
Yeah.
Yes.
It was once.
It, it's been applied for, and it's, it's had, I don't know how many reviews now.
They've had a number of meetings.
Yeah, and they, it's just been, uh, they got a lot of issues on that site, so.
It was like ten times too big the first time you invited it.
Sometimes the petitioner doesn't heed our advice.
And that's where, you know, that's, that's my job to basically, like, clear view, they basically demanded to be on the commission agenda, and we had reviewed it, I don't know, four or five times already. And, you know, it's like, fine, and it's, go for it.
Okay.
That worked out well.
Moving along here, we, everybody know the task on that one?
They know, they stopped listening after a while.
Brian, you emailed me and Belinda the minutes.
Yep.
And, and we gave you some, did you mail, email to everybody?
No, only.
Cause me and Belinda are the picky ones?
Yeah.
I, I hadn't seen anything, I just.
Yeah, you, yeah, you, it was fine, and you, I think you gave me a few things that I tweaked, but it's way easier for me to just send it to a couple of you to look at, and then that way, it's easier, cause now we can just approve them, cause I made those changes.
Makes sense, do you send them to everybody?
I mean, you can, but, I mean, I, in the past, I never did that, but, um, I tried to just keep it to one or two people.
I like to see them because I talk a lot, so I wanna make sure.
See your name?
I wanna make sure that my, the content is.
Well, if you wanna, I'll leave them, I'll send them to you.
Yeah.
Send it to everybody, maybe somebody else will find something that I don't.
Well, we, we used to have someone who actually watched the tape, and that would make, make changes.
Oh, my goodness. Holy cow, that's like going to two minutes.
Yeah, she'd go back and verbatim, probably, she could see it live.
Why don't you send them everybody? All right, so with that said, how about a motion to approve the minutes unless anybody else has any other corrections?
Motion to per.
Support.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Obstain.
Obstain, yeah.
That wasn't.
Uh, Belinda, consultants report, you don't have anything, do you?
No.
Okay, discussion, uh, follow-up was Trillium, I remember last month I said I would have a follow-up item, and my own, my memory serves me poorly, but I think Trillium is the only thing still on there. Um, and we already discussed that, you haven't heard anything back from them.
No, they submitted construction plans and, and we, uh, reviewed them and kicked them back.
And Brian.
What did you do about the rooftop?
Well, that, we're not even there yet, we're working on engineering plans.
Okay.
Brian, you, anything new on the pipeline, formal pipeline?
Um, Red Barn just submitted about three hours ago.
You're hitting.
For. Plan Shopping Center.
At the same spot?
Just without a gas station?
Correct.
And they really want. Being called a shopping center?
Well, that's something I think we need to seriously consider looking at that definition, because it basically says two or more tenants.
Well, I don't like that because it, it opens us up for special land use approval, right? If it's called a shopping center or not.
Well, the, the last one did, it, it said right on the first, like, the cover sheet, and I, and I talked to Mr. Carlisle, and I said, uh, have you, are you reading this? Cause it was the exact same plan without the gas.
Yeah.
Yet, yeah, I'm sure they would've put the fuel tanks in, but because we have that section of the ordinance, you know, for like Kroger, or, you know, if you're in a planned shopping center, you can do as an ancillary use, it's special land use, I think, but it's still, you can, you can put gas in. But, so they're, they're maneuvering their way around that language, and I, I don't wanna talk too much more about that.
Put that on the list of ordinance reviews.
I mean, I, I don't wanna, I don't want to, uh, speak too much more about it, but basically, we caught it, and they said, we're, we're pulling it.
We're vulnerable for that with other shopping centers in the area, and I think we need to look at that because we, we don't wanna be, uh, this is one of those housekeeping things, because you could have the same thing, any of the big plazas we have could come in and be like, we wanna put gas kiosks, we wanna do this, and, you know, and then, you know, how do you, give one to the other, just because you're a, a shopping center doesn't mean you get to fill the parking lot with more uses.
Special land use gives us a lot of pressure, but yeah, maybe it's not enough.
Wow.
Well, is this a, is this one of the sites that we're thinking about rezoning?
Yes.
And would that new rezoning cut that?
Yes, though.
Yeah.
It was never, it's not allowed in any of the zoning structures there, really.
Okay, uh, next item. Uh, Sam, you had, had some comments about wanting two meetings a month.
I really want two meetings a month, if it's a money thing, I think we should ask the board for money to do it. I think I can get some support, that, uh, is my thing. There's a lot of housekeeping that needs to get done, it's not getting done, these projects are getting more and more complicated, like tonight, okay? There's no way we could be working on ordinances tonight, realigning the zoning tonight, talking about all these ordinances we've been talking about, you know, modifying and looking at. So I propose that we, as needed, you know, like, so I even, I'd mentioned it to a couple other people, that maybe for the next two, three months, before summer gets here, we have two meetings a month. The first meeting has petitioners at it, the second meeting is talking about, you know, getting the zoning aligned with the master plan, talking about ordinances. Talking about things like we just talked about there, we should look at the shopping center caveat of what that opens us up for. And, you know, it's, I've been here for twenty years, there's a lot of stuff we've been wanting to do, and we never get to it, and I think it's time, and, you know, that we do it. We get, we, we just get through some of this, we get some ordinances updated, we get our zoning updated, and then hopefully by summertime, we go back to one meeting a month. But we're just, it's, 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 you can see, it's, it's just, I, I think the way to do it is the way I'm proposing we do it, so we don't have petitioners here, we don't have a crowd full of people. We can if they're interested in what we're, you know, the rezonings or whatever, but it's focused on what we need to do to get all of our stuff caught up and aligned. You know, is what I, 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 I propose that we do.
Think Brian could be considering a workshop, so.
I understand budgeting, but everybody's got a budget, and everyone gets budget amendment, so until the board says we're not interested in you guys, I wanna get money in the budget for education, we haven't done any classes.
We do have it in the budget.
You do?
Yeah.
Well, we should be using it.
I think it's two or three people from, can attend the planning conference.
But I mean, we used to go to, I mean, just going down to Oakland County for the class, you know, they give a lot of stuff that we should, especially the new commissioners, you know, there's classes from the Brick Institute, there's classes on architecture, there's classes. there's classes from the Brick Institute, there's classes on architecture, there's classes, zoning classes are just good to know, even if you're a planning commissioner. You know, like, there's a lot of stuff that in the old days, we used to take a lot of classes and do stuff, and I just, you know, I don't want it to be, we can't afford to update our ordinances, and then I gotta hear that we can't defend what we want there, because we didn't align our stuff, and that's my concern. Uh, we got the Pine Knob thing going on with the ZBA, with stuff like, you know, just, there's a lot of things going on that I think we need to put protections in place, put people on notice. Even the fact that we're talking about rezoning and putting people on notice, to me, is important to say like, no, we're, we, we, you know, the master plan called it for this, we're moving to, it's public, we, we can defend that because we're doing it. Doing nothing, we just never get nothing done, that's, that's my, my opinion. And we had two meetings a month, two meetings a month for decades, you know, until the recession, it's not, this isn't something new. Um, and, uh, look at how much stuff is piled up on this. All the stuff we had after the last petitioner left the room could've been on the second meeting, the master plan update, these things we're talking about, your report, things that we can just go through and get shit, get stuff knocked out.
Have discussion.
Have discussion and talk about it without, um, that, that's my suggestion.
Stand until ten o'clock at night, that doesn't bother me.
I know, but we're not putting stuff, we're, you know, we're just talking about doing stuff, and we're here till ten o'clock, it's gonna be a lot harder doing stuff and getting out of here before ten o'clock. If you guys think we can do it all, then let's say, all right, let's stay till.
I'm not opposed to.
We used to extend it past ten all the time back in the old days, just take some motion.
It started at seven thirty, yeah.
I'm good with two, two meetings, so.
You're what, you're good?
Brian, I don't know what the budget is, how much more do we need? Do we need all the consultants at every one of them?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've got, I've got budgeted, uh, to a point where I can, you know, float some extra meetings, I think. Uh, I just gotta look at my numbers again, you know, because we pay the recording sec, you know, when we do a full meeting, we're, we're paying the recording secretary and things like that, so that's, you know, there's expense there plus all of you. But, you know, subcommittees, whether informal or formal, you know, that's, we cut, cut some of those expenses doing that.
I'm not saying don't do subcommittee meetings to get us to those meetings, you know, but I don't think that if we're having a discussion about rezoning property, we need, um, Jason here.
No, well.
Uh, it'd be nice to have the consultants for some of it, if we're, if we're just reviewing stuff, we could review it without some cost, and then we, it's more ready to go, then up to a meeting, and then we talk about it. So it's kind of a subcommittee meeting, but we all get input. It, you know, it, it's like a hybrid, you know?
Yeah, I mean.
That, that gonna just be on TV instead, so.
Yeah, I could attend remotely, that would, but, um, one thing I will offer is, I've worked with two communities where they had a lot of zoning ordinance amendments to do, and they have a standing ordinance review committee, and that review committee does the heavy lifting in terms of researching, looking at other communities, looking at other communities, and then brings, uh, essentially a zoning ordinance amendment to the Planning Commission. Um, and I've found that that subcommittee for ordinances specifically, for zoning ordinance amendments specifically, if you set up a schedule in the beginning of the year, you can really get through them, um, in a efficient manner.
What about this? What if we do a subcommittee meeting on the rezoning thing you're talking about this month, you know, or something like that? And, and some of these, and get a list of the amendments and everything, and then in March, we have the second meeting in March, and that gives us lots of time to get our ducks in a row, to hammer out some housekeeping stuff, does that? I don't wanna just throw a meeting together in two weeks and not be prepared to do something, but I just.
I tend to agree, I would, I would probably give yourself time, you know, I know we've got, or I have kind of a list of minor tweaks, you know, I've caught some little minor things here and there that we can clean up as ordinance amendments, and, um, so I think that's right, Sam, I, I would almost have, form a subcommittee right now and say, okay, and then you guys sort out when you're gonna meet, and go through these things, and then, um, we'll just reconvene in that second meeting in March.
What if we split up into two, Bill? If half of us do rezoning stuff, and the other half work with Brian on ordinance cleanup and new ordinance we wanna write, and, you know, the, if we're gonna do the woodland thing, if we're gonna do, uh, you know, rentals, if we're gonna. Now, there are some things too that, um, talking with, um, um, the supervisor that he would like us to have some input on some things and some discussions that we can bring to the board, and those can be things that, that one subcommittee works on, and then the other subcommittee works on the, the zoning stuff, and then we could be more prepared. Then in the first meeting in March, we could see like where we're all at with our things, and be like, yeah, we're, we got all these things ready to go for the second meeting, you know, let's, but, you know, something like that maybe, to, does that make?
I think that makes better sense, yeah.
You know, then there's three of us, uh, working on one thing and three of us working on another thing.
Uh, that's fine with me, I'm, I'm, I'm all in favor of, um, two meetings a month on an as-needed basis, I don't think it makes sense to just set a rule, we're gonna go to two meetings a month every month for a, uh, undefined period, we do it on an as-needed basis, and I'm in favor of subcommittees to kinda drill down into some of this kind of stuff. So, yeah, so you're talking one subscommittee that, that deals with the master plan zoning ordinance alignment.
Yep.
And another subs, a subcommittee that looks at, um, various, uh, potential zoning ordinance amendments.
Correct. And whatever, what did we talk, I forget what the topic was today we were talking about, where he wanted us to put some input even though it really wasn't.
Uh. Eagle Ridge?
Uh, it had to do with, um, engineering design standard stuff.
Hmm?
Engineering design standard stuff that we need to look at.
Oh, yeah, right, the stormwater thing, right. So, you know, what, uh, what other communities are doing, stuff like that, so that would be, and I think that would be in the ordinance subcommittee. And then the rezoning is, is, is got its own thing, and that's enough to keep two subcommittees busy.
Okay.
And, you know, the thing is too, is, um, the supervisor wants us, even though it may not be in the gen, or in the zoning ordinance, he still wants Planning Commission input on it, so, you know, even though you have no statutory approval, you know, requirements or anything like that, or public hearing notice, you know, for those types of ordinances, he still wants, he's gonna want some input and be able to read that, you know, at, in the board packet, you know?
Regarding?
Uh, a general code ordinance, like, uh, changing stormwater standards, um, cause, uh, Dave McKee and I have been talking to Jason about revamping all of our engineering design standards, cause they just, they're outdated.
So we're typically, that would go right to the board.
Yeah.
But then all of us board members gotta dive in and get into it and look at it, the, right before a meeting, cause we don't have subcommittees. He wants us to do the heavy lifting, get some consensus, get some, put, you know, bang some ideas around, even though it's not ours, you know, and then, and then, and then present it to them with some input, and then, then let the trustees and the, uh, elect, you know, the elects go after it.
Yeah, it'll help them find out, or get a little better understanding of.
All right, so who's, I, I initiated the re, the zoning, not master plan alignment, so I'll be on that, who else wants to be on that? I think Sam does.
I'll be on stormwater.
You'll be on the ordinance.
Yeah, ordinance.
Well, let's take one at a time, looking for a volunteer for the master plan zoning ordinance, at least three.
Probably me, yeah, probably me.
Okay.
But I, but you, you also have to know that there are other subcommittees that were starting to juggle, right?
Yeah, they are.
PUD review, and I'm concerned about, like, what exactly is, how much is that a three day, three night a week thing, or?
The PUD review?
Yeah, I don't know, so I'm just like, we're starting to commit to multiple meetings and multiple subcommittees, and I have personal life, I just wanna make sure that we're all here. So, we can do that, I'll be, I'm happy to be on the zoning.
All right, so you'll be on the, okay, now we need some for the zoning ordinance thing. Belinda, Joe?
Ron.
Is that it? We got it, we got one more minute before we gotta extend the meeting.
Okay. Are we done? I think we're done.
Well, when are we meeting for these subcommittee things?
We'll talk.
Are we gonna?
We don't know yet.
What's the sort thing?
You guys will work it out.
So, we're not gonna have a meeting on the twenty-seventh, Planning Commission meeting is the twenty-seventh.
We're shooting for March, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
End of March.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, thank you.
At nine, nine twenty.
Hey, guys, thank you everybody for, you know, minding the decorum, not cutting people off, waiting for to be recognized, everything, I really appreciate that.